Okay, of course.
Okay.
I will.
Okay.
That's right.
Should have your eyes taken dilated or something?
No, they basically just told me that the bright lights will affect my eyes from now until I die. So I may have to wear glasses like Jeremy or just squeak. Hope I don't have to squeak.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Bye.
Thank you. Wow, smart putter. Never.
Mmm.
Let's hope it works.
Yeah.
What's our reason for this?
Reason for what?
I was just wondering why I got this here. Is that to wipe my eyes or what?
I don't think you want to wipe your eyes with that.
No, I don't.
It's so fun. Probably more to clean your fingers after you eat your brownies.
I don't know where we need to do that. I can't get any more than there's one there.
That's crazy. Oh. Yeah, that would be the hard part.
Um, I'm.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd better go. I'm very certain I'm leaving. All right. Try to sweeten me up, dude. Don't try to sweeten me up. You better give it the plank.
James, are we expecting other folks for this RDA discussion or is it just you?
Come on, what if I sign here?
Okay.
I don't think we have any complications per se, um, so let's just review and then maybe next steps.
Okay, perfect.
We do have a request out.
Okay. What's up? Okay, let's go ahead and get started then. Um, welcome to Morgan County RDA Board meeting, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. We're convening as an RDA board. Members of the commission are convening as an RDA board. Going to talk about the history of the RDA in the county, project area, project budgets, et cetera, and then discussion, decision on any potential revisions to the project area, county consultant budget, interlocal agreements, et cetera. Okay, we'll hand it over to you, James.
Wonderful, thank you. So we had a great opportunity, and again, I don't want to take up too much of your time because I know that there's other things on the agenda for this meeting for the commission meeting. However, I think it's important for us to kind of get some background on where we are on a county perspective. We do have the initial draft for the Mountain Green Peterson area plan that will be coming to you fairly quickly. We believe that Lance will finish, finish, finish off some details of it and we'll get it sent out. The reason I bring this plan up is a big component of this plan will be future development and how, from a county perspective, we can help drive development to areas that the county plan or the eventual general plan with the adoption of the small area plans would, with appropriate planning, have development grow. And again, whether that's retail, commercial, industrial, or residential. The RDA is a tool that can be used by the county to help direct that type of growth. A lot of times we look at RDAs or CRAs as a tool that just developers use to help them, you know, finance a development. But the reality of it is it can be a tool that the county can use or a municipality can use to help direct where growth is. Sometimes we do that through zoning, but zoning has loopholes and others, other things that sometimes, because you can't plan for every option of a development, that maybe sometimes development doesn't exactly occur how you would like it in a certain area that is zoned. Well, the RDA or CRA allows you a tool because it's a financial carrot that a developer can use to help maybe direct or dictate some things like architectural rendering or house density or commercial percentage. So say in a development agreement from the county's perspective, you say we want fifteen percent commercial in this area. But the reality of it is ten years later, when you're looking at it, you would like higher. Well, you could do an RDA requirement in that area for thirty percent commercial. And they don't have to use that, correct? But if they want to attain maybe some of the benefits of that TIF financing or that RDA financing, that would be something that would help encourage them to do those types of things. So there's a lot of reasons for RDAs. Again, I think we have some individuals, probably some commissioners that have, you know, maybe some background in Commissioner McConnell. If there's something in here you want to pop in, please feel free. But I think it's an amazing tool from the county's perspective inside that we, we can use to help and not only provide the incentives for developers and good developers, but also provide the type of community that we're looking to build out. And again, having this eventual general plan, the adoption of the small area plans will help you as commissioners provide the direction into those communities of the type of growth that you think that you'll need for a variety of reasons. And because this report is a hundred and twenty pages, I can't find the exact statistics. But we went over this, I think, just the other night. And when we look at Morgan County, I think Morgan County has the second highest percentage of property tax that is on the backs of single-family dwellings in the entire state. So a majority upwards of ninety percent or ninety-five percent of all the taxes collected, property taxes, are for a single family, which basically means that your resident, your, your commercial base is so small and it's probably a little out of whack. And then I think that number is almost that same percentage that these single-family homes are almost all dwellings. I mean, what, not secondary homes, but primary homes. So what I guess I'm saying is that your residents, your primary residents that have single-family homes are providing the property tax at a, at a very high rate because you have a very small commercial base within the county. And so when you have citizens in here really frustrated with property tax, a majority of that reason isn't because, in my opinion, the county wastes a lot of money. I think the county is very frugal in its money. I just think that there's not a large enough base that isn't residential to help offset some of that. And that's why this real focus on some quality commercial retail development, focusing in out towards in recreation will really help offset some of those, some of that weight that your citizens continue to have to bear. Does that make sense? Did I explain that clear as mud to everybody?
I got it.
So, uh, thank you very much, Commissioner. We're acknowledging that. So, uh, in the past, I don't think, and I don't believe that Morgan has really utilized RDAs or CRAs. Right now, I think there is one that has worked its way somewhat through the process, but not all the way. Commissioner McConnell, did you, were you thinking there was possibly another one that was in the works besides the one in the Mountain Green Town Center area or?
We do have one here in Morgan City that's, that's been in existence for quite some time. And we've been actively participating in it.
So I guess my reference is, is an RDA or CRA that is ran by this board, not one that is ran by another board, which will be the city running one, and you participate. So yes, there is a participating and one for the city, but not one specific for the county and the, the commission slash RDA board is actually running it.
So we're just a local taxing entity for purposes of the city.
Of the city. That makes sense.
Do you feel like you know enough about RDAs and TIF? Or you, should I go into it a little more deeper conceptually?
I have a question on it.
Yes.
If.
Now, I'm not an expert, but I'll answer what I can and then Robert will finish.
So we.
Do you still have your question?
Sorry. No, I forgot.
Not my fault.
Wow, that was one hundred percent on me, but I apologize.
Um, we can set the amount of time for that, like a ten-year or twenty-year. I know the, the one over here might be twenty years. I don't know. The RD, the RDA here, can we do multiple items within this RDA? I mean, how does that work? Entities that might want to utilize sort of part of the RDA.
You betcha. So normally how an RDA CRA process is put together, and I think that's something we need to talk about today is establishing a process, is that the, the developer puts together an RDA area plan. And within that RDA area plan is a budget. That budget is then used or presented to the, the board for review. And the RDA budget actually has the time and span, including an inception date or start date, and the percentage needed of TIF return to meet that eventual budget. So usually what you'll have is a long budget and it has all the numbers in it and it has all the years in it, right? And then we'll have the percentage of the TIF, and sometimes that percentage may have a step down or an increase. And those numbers then actually come to zero at the end that the amount of money needed to make that project work, let's say it's one million dollars, at the end of ten years at this percentage will then, then, then draw all this money down to the zero. Or, in other words, it will collect this million dollars at the end of this ten years at ten percent based upon the TIF increase of the property value. And so then what we, then we'll work through a process of establishing what that TIF, what that TIF can be used for, the purpose of it, and they'll have to do justifications and the whole, a whole kind of a business plan on what that looks like and how it looks. It's a, that's a very simple description.
So what is there, and Robert might be able to tell us this, but what is it, what's there that could possibly, after ten years, the company, the business does not make it and we've just lost all of that that we put into it? Then what happens?
Well, you haven't really lost it because a, a TIF is almost a post-performance, right? So as the property increases and the county is collecting more taxes, then a percentage of that is taken off and put back into the project. Does that make sense? So if it's a fifty-fifty over the time of that TIF up to the point you call, you're calling a failure, right? You, you're still collecting fifty percent forever. And then if they fail and they, they bag, you have a clawback in it, which means you can pull that money back if there's a failure or there's a change of business or the model isn't working. You know, you can write those clauses into that agreement. There's, there's opportunities to have clawback. I'm calling it a clawback. Maybe there's a more appropriate term for it.
Well, I, I think in part it, so if you look at what they gave us, which was the twenty nineteen budget, and you had a list of items that's eighteen items long.
Right.
Most of that is related to infrastructure development. So if one developer came in and did that and the budget was accurate and they spent the seventeen point two million dollars to put all of that in, that's all there. That never goes away. Whether they succeed or fail, that never goes away. That infrastructure is there and they don't get reimbursed a dime until they've actually put it in. So if you go, that's a significant number, but let's say you went with a seventeen-year payback period. As you budgeted it, you allocated your percentage of the TIF that it, that they get. If they outperform, meaning that the value of the improvements in the project area exceed the value set forth in the budget, they'll get paid back more quickly, but they'll never get more than the seventeen point two million dollars they spent. If it underperforms and they get to the end and they haven't been fully reimbursed, most of the time, that's their loss. So if during that seventeen years, it's a shopping center and tenants come and go and fail, it's irrelevant because it, the, the values generated on the basis of the taxable value of the property. I mean, I guess if you have no tenants, then the value would, should technically come down if the assessors valued it based upon their leasehold revenues generated by the project. But overall, so I don't, I don't know if that answered your question. Yeah, they'll have a base value.
Still there.
Mm-hmm.
It's just.
And it just allows another group to come in and take over the project if that's what, what happens. Or new tenants to take new spaces and so forth.
So is there a relationship between RDA and rooftops? So, and it just seems like there's been multiple commercial businesses and it doesn't matter if it's Mountain Green or up here in Morgan City. But they, they come in with the flowery picture and really think that they can make this work. And it actually seems like the majority of them, it doesn't work after a period of time. So do you see a relationship between what the RDA would do and not having enough, well, what most of them would say enough rooftops or enough people up here to actually warrant them staying afloat as a business?
So I think, again, that's something that we look at from the RDA board's perspective. Part of their application will be to prove to the RDA board that it's a viable project. That's not amazing. So I, I think that's a component of it, but there is a component of RDAs. And I think particularly even, we've had discussions lately that RDA many times is just for infrastructure. But there are opportunities in RDAs to, to assist the developer in making it through some maybe lean times because there's a build-out of rooftops. Maybe it's a supplement for lease, lease agreements to start out with. So if you look at your lease grocery store, and we'll see this probably as soon as we can all go through the report. Right now, there are about a thousand and fifteen homes under the rooftops needed for lease to make it. So they're going to have a couple lean years. So would it make sense for some of the RDA dollars to help offset some of those losses to help as those homes are built out? Again, that will be a proposal that the developer or the applicant will have to, you know, have to make to the board and the board will have to make a decision if, if that's the appropriate use in their eyes of those dollars. However, to I think Commissioner McConnell's point and to a business and economic development component that we always have to be aware of is that development sometimes takes one or two owners to actually become successful. And if we do use it for infrastructure, that infrastructure still in the ground is still viable. If something does happen to the developer, they still own the property. Taxes are still there to be paid and tax increment is taken from the taxes that are paid by the property owners. And so they still have to pay those taxes at the end of the day. But again, I'll use Powder Mountain as an example. Powder Mountain just went through some new ownership. And so there was a lot of angst when that initial project was kind of put together. But the money that is being used to kind of continue to move that project forward because there was a, it's a little different than a CRA, but to pay for that road is collected from the landowners within that project area. So I think that there are some built-in precautions and safeguards for the county because you're not really outlaying dollars that would not, that would be in the general fund if but for the property value increased. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, you're formulating a question, I think, or you're Googling something?
I'm Googling something.
I'm just teasing you. So conceptually, I think that there is a lot of due diligence on the front end of CRAs and we will have a conversation on how we do that here in a second, hopefully. But I do believe that they're a strong tool that can be used by the, by the municipality or by the county to help direct appropriate and planned development. And it can be a tool that can be even a little more directive than your regular zone if they want to take advantage of that tool.
So this was created back in twenty nineteen?
Yes.
It looks like they came up with a project area, a project area plan, and a project area budget. I don't know that any of those were actually finalized and adopted other than the creation of the project area.
I agree.
So that came to an end in terms of an initiative. I'm assuming the project area continues to exist. Although in my looking at the map, I think I might want to alter that or it might be advisable to alter that, to pick up the commercial areas on the other side of the old highway. So what would be our process for doing that? Just is it, do we need to, I guess I'm asking the question, do we need to start over in terms of a project area plan and budget or can we amend these? The budget's clearly going to be out of date.
So I'm not an expert in this area and I can go do more research, but from what I understand, I think it can be amended rather than starting over. And so that's why the materials were included in the packet was to say, this is where it was left off and we haven't met for three, well, how long have we been? Probably three years?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years. And so it kind of came to that halt. Rather than, you know, adopting another ordinance to establish the RDA, I think we would just look at where it stopped and decide, is it something you want to continue? And if so, how, maybe it needs to be amended or I guess you could scrap it and start over too. I, I don't think that you're limited to one or the other.
Okay.
From what I understand, you have the option to amend.
So you could dissolve the project area and have them start again. Or to Garrett's point, our county attorney's point, I think we could just do an amended, just request them to amend the area, including the budget of the project area.
So typically, these things are funded by an applicant in terms of updating maps and budgets and preparing them. So I guess what I'm just wanting to make sure we're in a position to do is to respond to an applicant, if there were an applicant to come in and say, we want to use tax increment funding. I think Lee's Marketplace is one that may be considering that. Are we in a position then, I guess, just to say, okay, we've got the RDA in place, project area, we think that it may need to be amended, but we're amenable to going through that process with you as you fund the, you know, map amendment and budget process and so forth?
I think that that would be the desire of those that, that want to move this forward. And I think as far as I understand the history, it was being funded and they hired, you have to remind me, the group Smith.
Yeah, I can't remember the group.
Smith Harvickson.
Harvickson, yeah, that one, to, to kind of help. And I think it was disappoint, well, I don't know. I, I wasn't there, but from what I gathered, they said, it doesn't look like the RDA board is in favor of this at this point. They're not looking, it doesn't look like they'll approve the proposed budget. And so it kind of dropped at that point. But I, from the meeting that we had earlier, I think that there are some stakeholders that are interested in picking that up again and putting in, you know, the, the money that it would take to get a new proposal. And maybe just some direction from the commission or maybe testing the water of, is this something, or not the commission, the RDA board, is this something that is, is available? And then there would also be a negotiation process where they come in with a proposal and we say, no, that's too, you know, we can't do that much, but maybe we can come in at this percentage and there's still some negotiation that could be worked out. But I think the, the stakeholders or those that are interested in pursuing this are more looking for, is this still on the table? Has the, the feeling of the RDA board changed since two and a half years ago where perhaps this could move forward? And then if so, they'll put some investment into updating the, the area, the budget and, and let that negotiation take place of what is, you know, what are the numbers going to actually look like? I mean, there, there's a lot of calculations that go into it that I, that I don't fully understand. I, I'm kind of getting firehose, you know, okay, this, this is the concept, this is how it could work. But I think that was another thing that probably James is going to bring up as well, that the county might, you know, rely on someone who's an expert in this field to kind of consult the county too, to make sure that we're getting a really good agreement in place as far as percentages and how long it lasts and clawbacks or whatever it, it's, it's called in those types of agreements.
So I know Commissioner Wilson spoke for all of us when he said, we understand, but I don't think I do all the way.
And I'll be honest, I, I think unless she spends a lot of time in this, there's, we've got, so there's a couple of things I wanted to talk about, Commissioner, sorry to cut you off. But I do think we're going to have, if, if we understand that development is coming and there are going to be requests for RDAs or CRA overlays in project areas, we've got to have somebody who understands these well enough to make sure that the contracts we sign, I mean, this is the issue we have with our broadband, one of our broadband contracts. We've got to have somebody who knows enough about it that can make sure every T is crossed, every I is dotted. Conceptually, what we're looking for is reflected in the contract. The state just did a, a pretty large review and audit of the RDAs and came back with some very negative findings for many of the RDAs that are out there. They're not being checked, they're not being ran, the money's not being spent appropriately. And so we, the RDA, the RDA has the ability to write within the agreement of five to ten percent administrative cost from the county's side to, to review it and to run it because they actually have to be run. You just don't, you just don't approve an RDA and then you never see it anymore, right? So the money has to be coming in, the money's transferred over to you, the board. So say it's a million dollars a year, well, you're going to get that million dollars a year for these five projects. Somebody's got to be checking all these projects to make sure every agreement with the, and our stipulation within those agreements has been met before that check's being written. And probably, you probably want to have somebody that bi-yearly or quarterly is just double-checking to make sure those things are quarterly happening.
And that money comes from the state?
No, that money will come from, from the RDA board through the agreements. So say we give a million dollars in, from the RDA over a course of a period of time and you write in a two or three percent, just like you do in a grant for oversight. Well, that will be the dollars that you can use to either hire or consult or whatever, somebody to be checking all these things to make sure, or work with Garrett to make sure the legal requirements are being met, making sure that the money's being spent in the appropriate manner. And so to your, and then hopefully that person also is the same person then who can help formulate at the front end of these agreements to make sure that everything and stipulations the county needs in there are written in the agreement correctly.
So can I ask my question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
I'm going to cut you off and answer one. You know, as a politician, I can answer a question that has nothing to do with what you said.
I had no idea you were a politician. I knew you were. So if this is an example for us and this is, and let's just, for sake of understanding it better, it's 17 million. We've got an area, let's say Leeds Market is inside this area. So just understanding it basically, that what's going to help Leeds Market is they're not going to be paying as high of taxes because we're going to set up incrementally how that's going to work initially.
So they, wouldn't it be they're not paying as high of taxes?
They still pay it.
They still pay it.
They still pay the tax rate. Then out of that tax rate, say that $100,000 that's collected out of the same tax rate that everybody else is paying, they have a 10% return that comes back to them from the county, back to the RDA board, from the RDA board, back to the developer to use in a manner that you stipulated they can use it. Maybe lease, maybe lease assistance, it could be infrastructure, it could be water, it could be a number of things.
So really, the benefit to the county would be, because it's not, money-wise, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a benefit per se. What we're doing is we're helping create a mechanism where a commercial can come in and be built and get on their feet. And then what we're saying initially is say, we're going to give back a certain percent.
A certain percentage, yes, sir.
We're not going to be able to use that in our, in our general budget, which we desperately need, but...
Well, you can use, you can use the increment that you don't give them. So say it's a 50/50, you get that 50% of the increase, they get the other 50% or whatever.
And the way I've heard it explained a lot of times is you're taking that base year amount, right? So let's say that property right now, we're getting $10,000 a year in property taxes on. They're going to come in, they're going to build structures that are worth, I don't know how many millions, but now the tax rate's going to be $100,000 a year on that. So the increment is 100,000. Of that 100,000, sorry, 90,000.
Start at 10.
90,000. 90,000, sorry. Increment is 90,000. Let's say we're going to give 50% of that back through the CRA. So 45,000 of that goes back through the CRA to help encourage that initial investment. The other 45 comes to the county.
The other 55, so you always get your base, you'll always get your base, that will never change.
Sorry, 55 plus the base.
Yeah.
So who benefits the most out of this whole thing? Well, that depends on the, so look.
Depends on how you look at it.
I've done, I've done these, he's talking 50%. This proposal here, I believe, was 76%. I've done them where the RDA has given all of it back to the development entity, except for their administration fee.
Initially.
Yeah, for the course of time. If this had been approved back in 2019, the basic raw value of the ground over that period of time has incrementally gone up. You would be generating more increment just on the basis of the value. The ground and no improvements have been put in. But over the long term, the community develops because once you get to the end of that repayment period, whatever we set that at, 15, 7, 21 years, whatever it is, then all of that increment, all of that increased value, plus the sales tax generated by the economic enterprise that's there, goes to the community. But in the short term, more often than not, most of the benefit goes to the development.
So then where, under your scenario, here with the city, we're giving them 75% right now?
Of the county's portion.
Of the county's portion. So when do we see a return other than increased value?
Once the reinvestment period or reimbursement period ends.
And I guess you could argue for the city specifically, one of the things they did was that hotel. So the return that we're seeing is also in the, in the taxes that are coming back.
Yeah, we've got transient occupancy tax that's being generated from that. Now, these things can also involve reimbursement, taking a reimbursement portion of the sales tax if you want to. And there's state incentives that can be utilized to do all of this. You have to be decidedly in favor of developing the area for commercial development that you're talking about here. When we had our last rezone in where we had all of the public opposition, one of the things that they wanted were improvements to the old highway, lane expansion, you know, traffic control and all of that sort of thing. Well, that was a significant portion of this budget, at least through, you know, a significant area of the old highway. And, you know, is that all, is all of that increased volume attributable to this development? Perhaps. And if that were the case, you would say, well, you shouldn't be reimbursed for it. That should just be a project improvement for your project. Or does, is it needed generally to handle the overall volumes that are being generated by development in the whole Mountain Green area in this case? And in that case, it's a project, a system improvement and we ought to be amenable to allowing them to be reimbursed for that. So that can be a benefit, the improvement of the, I mean, if you look at the list of improvements that were being done, that's the material benefit you get upfront as the jurisdiction.
It's almost as if, if we don't do the RDA and commercial are struggling to stay afloat here, we might, we wouldn't possibly even see it anyway then.
Or what you have is this commercial growth that's unstructured. And so if we're looking from a community perspective of open space, planned areas, again, Josh helped me out a little bit if I misspeak. But if there's a way that we can have a tool that helps create viability in a planned area for commercial, and even though there may be a hurdle or two to jump over, but that tool allows us to get that growth happen in that area, that's a, you know, to Robert's point, that's more of a system approach rather than unplanned, the viability of maybe something will work here and then two miles down the road, something will hurt work here, right? Because they're closer to a residential, or closer to a residential. Instead of having a planned community and now we're concentrating it in one area and then the rest of the community is still open and still rural and still feels like Morgan. And so again, I think the answer I would give to you is there's a huge financial benefit, short-term and long-term, even 25% of that TIP for a period of time on property that would sit fallow, fallow?
Fallow.
Thank you.
What word did you just say?
Fallow?
I say it with a Utah accent, it comes out weird when I say it. But that, the increase in that value, you'll still incur it, even if it's not 100%. But it's 100, it's 50% of something instead of 0% of nothing. And then this idea that it actually is used as a tool to help drive your growth to areas within your plan. So I think there's three positives for the county. Of course, there's a positive for the developer, that's how we're trying to get them to develop, right? But I do think there's huge, there's huge positives for the community and for the county.
James, taking this, this example, they've got a $17 million budget, but let's say they come in with that, that doesn't mean that the RDA has to generate $17 million. That's just their overall cost, correct?
Well, what they'll come in with is they'll come in with the cost of the project. They'll also come in with understanding the budget that they need to make the project work. And then they'll use what the money that they feel is that they need to help span that shortfall. And then they'll put it against their budget and say, for this many years, we need this percentage of what we see the growth of their value of this property to offset that number. And then we, to Garrett's point, will have discussions on whether we need to, we think that's, you know, if we read the right person and they can look at the numbers and see if, you know, the market value of that will grow, if their timeline. Again, I think another thing to the last question is, if we have a quicker start date, then we can kind of dictate to them, listen, you need to get this project going because every year they don't start the project is one year less in their time, in their timeline. Does that make sense? And so I think, you know, that's another tool that you can use to help maybe move a project forward a little quicker than normally it would, so.
Am I the only one freezing to death?
It's a little chilly.
It's cold.
It's a lot chilly.
I've got cold air blowing on me almost.
So Commissioner Anderson, would you just scoot your chair closer? He wants a hug.
Body heat.
So to understand, just to make sure you're clear on where the funds come from. This is just property tax that's collected, it's collected by our assessor. And then if the RDA has allocated a portion to a project area, it's paid to the RDA and distributed. And it involves, we only control-
So is that a budget line on our budget every year?
Well, the RDA will have a budget.
But where does, that, that money's coming from us, so is that a line item budget on our budget?
Well, yeah, we wouldn't, no, because we wouldn't be receiving it. It wouldn't be going to the general fund because we've said, presumably, if you do this, that the portion of the increment, that the increment generated by Mountain Green Town Center project is going to be funded to the RDA.
It's like, it's like if you have a fire district, the money comes into the county, the county sends money to the special districts, it never goes into your general budget. The money would go into the RDA before, it doesn't go to your general budget now. If I read it all correctly, it should go from the clerk, the clerk's office, clerk's office? And then it will go, just like a special district, go right to the RDA budget.
But I guess what I'm saying is that it robs some of the income. Yeah, it certainly reduces the overall income that you would otherwise get if there was no RDA.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the other taxing agencies need to consent if they want to participate. So it's not all just us. So the school district has the largest portion. If the school district consents to a portion of their increment going towards the development of this project, then portion of their increment. The other, all of the taxing agencies have to consent. And the county goes and negotiates inter-local agreements with them in order to secure that consent over the long term. And then the other agreement that is done is the reimbursement agreement with the developer, which is where you identify what percentage of the increment they get, what's their reimbursement period.
Usage.
Yeah, usually you've specified exactly what they get reimbursed for. So that's the way it works.
So how, I mean, if, say for instance, their sales tax is only 10,000, I don't know how much your taxes would be. Say it's only $10,000. Then how do they get enough money to this project out?
Well, first of all, this has nothing, this budget and what was proposed before had nothing to do with sales tax. Sales tax is an additional thing that could be sent their direction. You meant property tax. Yeah, I mean, that's what, when you look at the budget, I mean, this is just the, this is just the budget for the improvements. This is not the RDA budget. The RDA, they would show on a pro forma, we're going to spend $17 million on infrastructure and we're going to spend another $90 million in putting the project in. So we have a $107 million project. That's currently farmland. It's got a value, but it's, it's not $107 million. So that, all that property tax generated on that increment is what goes to create a funding source to repay back a portion of the cost they put into the project that's infrastructure related or whatever else we approve. Actually, the purposes that you can use it for are actually fairly broad, but most of them relate to something like this.
And sometimes commissioners slash planners slash RDA boards will want to have an area of focus on something. So maybe this makes sense for, or for a lease assistance. Maybe this one makes more sense for infrastructure, overcoming barriers for infrastructure costs. So again, I think that's negotiable within the board and within a conventional RDA agreement, so.
And if this had been done, let's say, and then somebody, a tenant comes in, a grocery store tenant, and they say, we don't think we can make it unless we get a portion of the increment. Well, we've already awarded the increment to the developer, but the tenants, large tenants, are not shy about saying, we want a portion of the increment that you're receiving pursuant to your agreement. And they would do that pursuant to a separate agreement. So Josh has a point to make.
I would also add that something like this, the goals, objectives, and the action implementation strategies for this type of, and you would be added into your general plan in economic development section or...
So it's clear, this is the intent of the RDA, is to encourage X type of development or encourage the development in this area?
Right. And an economic development section in your general plan would have nodes of development where these types of agreements would be considered. And then the general plan would include goals, objectives, and then implementation strategies to bring about these types of things. They'd be general in nature, nothing specific.
So to me, an answer with respect to moving forward with this really comes down to your commitment to developing a town center area in Mountain Green where we've indicated that a town center ought to be. Because, I mean, I was on the other side of this deal the last time we went through this. Developer funded, their legal counsel, which was me, they funded the county's legal counsel, they funded the cost to do the budgets and so forth. And then it was just like, really for no identified reason that I recall that was substantive, it was, we don't want to do it. And it's like, well, that would have been nice to know before you started us off on this massive expenditure of funds, you know? So that's where, again, I'm saying, we need to be committed to doing this or we shouldn't lead the development community down the primrose path of suggesting that we are, having them spend the funds. Because like I said, typically, they're funding the cost of, I'm pretty sure Smith Harvickson's bill was paid for by the developer. So, so I thought, when I saw this, that it was approved.
So there was a resolution approved for the area plan.
And that was approved in 2017 as I read it.
Okay, yeah, that's true.
And then in 2019 was the last time, as I recall, we convened as an RDA board and had any discussion.
And can I just, I want to reaffirm Commissioner McConnell's point. We've spent time trying to put this together, Garrett has spent time, Josh has spent some time in probably thinking about it. We have interested parties that are ready to move forward. But what I don't want to do is move forward and then move back two spaces because that's not good for us. If the RDA board is not at a point where they're ready to move forward on this, then I say we just keep sitting on it rather than having people come and expense time, effort, and energy. Both the CEO board and the small area plan recommendations, both heavily recommend the RDA board moving forward in areas. And then again, to Josh's point, we need to write that into the general plan, have those areas designated. And then we need to, if we're ready then and the commitment's there, we want to start using this tool, then we need to come up with a good process. And I have some suggestions on a process, I've sent them to Garrett. And then we need to bring somebody on board that really can be the person to make sure that your real questions are answered in a real manner that really helps you and that you have confidence that the RDA is set up in a manner that protects the county to the fullest and it's bulletproof. But the first step is really getting the RDA board to say, listen, I think we need to use this tool and we're really willing to start implementing a process and then start having some, some applications come in.
So since you two were here back in this time period, how did the community receive this? Was it?
I don't recall we had any public input. Do you remember?
No, I don't remember a lot other than Tina. She was here.
There wasn't like a public hearing?
And the only thing I remember in terms of a conversation with Tina is on the percentage that they were requesting. Because-
And the time.
Yeah, so, you know, that is the fundamental thing you're negotiating. What percentage of the increment did they get and how long is their reimbursement period? And my view was that 76% was a low ask compared to all of the other ones that I've done. And I don't want to suggest I've done 50 of them, I've done maybe 10 of them. But the ones I have done, you know, it's like, yeah, we'll take all of it other than your administrative fee. And, you know, but that's a decision that needs to be made between the county and the applicant, and, and it's the jurisdiction's view of how important the project is, you know? If it's unimportant and the improvements are questionable, you know, you don't really want it, then yeah, I'm not giving you 76% or 95% or 50%, I'm not going to do it. So, but I don't remember there being any big public hearing where there were a lot of people.
So was it ever even voted on then?
It was, it was whether we were going to proceed or not. And I'll be honest, I, I voted against it at the time, and my hangup was the timeframe, because as I recall, they wanted 20-plus years or 25 years, and the 70, and the percentage. And I was of the opinion that it ought to be a lower percentage in a shorter time period, because I wanted a little more benefit for the community. The other reason I voted against it at the time was because the, the council at the time couldn't even coalesce around support of the interchange, let alone this, and I just saw it as being a fight moving forward, and I didn't want to go down that road.
You know, I think we want to provide you with the answers to your questions from somebody that is representing the county, so that you feel comfortable. Because sometimes where you were getting your answers was from the developer and the developer's team. And so I think we need to have somebody that can, you can ask a question to, and you feel like they have a county's best interest in mind, when they say, no, 17-year, once a year, that doesn't work, or 17 years, as I've reviewed this, does seem like the appropriate time to move this project forward. So I, I think that may also help alleviate some of the angst if we get the right person that you feel very comfortable with.
Well, and keeping track in our minds is who represents who, because there were members on the council at the time who couldn't keep track of which lawyers were standing up and which ones represented the counties and which ones represented the other.
Yes, that was true too.
And there was a sentiment by some that they didn't get reimbursement for their business, so why should anybody else?
Look, the RDA has been effective in Morgan City to bringing that hotel. That hotel would not have come to fruition had it not been for an RDA in Morgan City. I'm, I'm convinced of that. Because there just wasn't enough support to, to make that kind of investment without some kind of, you know, help. Whether, whether, you know, a huge investment is necessary, I don't know. So my personal thought is, again, I'm still not real comfortable with huge percentages and real long terms. I'd rather see a little shorter and, and, you know? But are there ways to use this as a tool to the county's advantage? Yeah, absolutely, I think there are. And, and maybe, maybe if we speak with somebody who can represent us and give us some real good detail, maybe we can come up with some ways to incentivize the exact type of development we want, instead of just a broad development. I don't know, because that's another thought. Because one of the, the focus of the CRA in Morgan became the hotel. And they, they were working towards just that, that development. They tried doing rent assistance on Commercial Street for a long time, many years. And businesses would come in, they'd pay their rent for two or three years, and then as soon as the city stopped paying the rent through the, well, it wasn't the city, as soon as the RDA stopped paying the rent, the business would go out of business, they couldn't stay afloat. So sometimes that's a good thing, but other times it's not. Then they, they changed and said, well, we're going to use the RDA funds to make improvements to the, to the buildings there, so that it costs the landlord less to be able to rent it to somebody, and hopefully they can rent it at lower rates, and that's been a little more effective. And then they, they, you know, worked on the hotel thing, so. Kind of used as a tool, yeah, it's just another tool in the toolbox. But could it, could it be, you know, more benefit to the developer than to the county? Yeah, for sure.
So the way, the way I look at the time and reimbursement percentage is what the pro forma shows, the pro forma shows, and as they estimate what they're going to develop, they're taking a risk setting that out on paper, because if they don't develop it fast enough, they'll run out of period, okay? So I'm like, let them take that risk, and what I want to decide is, which improvements will I authorize to reimburse them? Once I've done that and said, okay, I'm going through this list, and I'm like, okay, I, I see the importance of the highway improvement, but I, I'm not worried about the culinary water and the secondary water companies, they're private, let them develop that and work on that out. I take that out, everything else, I look at the pro forma, and if it takes 76% in 17 years to reimburse them for what I think they ought to be reimbursed for, so be it. I'm not, I'm not concerned about the percentages otherwise, because all's I'm looking at is the math, all right? Their, their pro forma, based on their estimate, is going to be that they're going to develop X, Y, and Z over the next 10 years, and if they do X, Y, and Z, in addition to putting these improvements, they could be reimbursed at 76% over 17 years for the improvements I've authorized. If that's what it is, okay, that's fine with me, you know? And if they outperform, we get money faster, if they underperform, they don't get fully reimbursed.
Yeah, because at the end of the term, they're done, whether they got reimbursed or not.
That's right.
So you're just basically trying to come to an agreement.
Yeah, it's, it's entirely negotiated.
Because it doesn't, the math is the math in the end.
Right, right. So to me, that's where I make that decision, Mike, as opposed to-
And that's an interesting-
Because to me, it's like the percentage, like, I've seen them, like I said, all the way up to the entire thing.
Well, and the problem with that is-
And that data center was highly wanted by that jurisdiction.
If you're just looking at the number, and you give them a number, they could cut out things that you prioritized in there, right, to make that number work. So I think this à la carte kind of concept where you're picking and making them prioritizing, and then whatever the number is, is a smart idea, because if you just give them a number, they could cut back things that you think, okay, well, we really wanted a hotel here, well, that is not going to work because of the numbers, right?
And do we have a say on what the frisades look like and all that stuff?
Yeah, that's already been done for the, for the town center zone.
So it has, so it's going to be uniform, not, not like Morgan.
There's design standards and the whole bit.
You couldn't say, you, you, you could say that it will be developed in accordance with a consistent standard. Uniformity isn't necessarily going to result from that, but they should be similar.
If you go look at our-
I mean, we have block, we have metal, we have-
It's very specific, if, if you go look in our code at the town center ordinance and the, and the town center zoning structure, it's, it goes through all of that, it even has pictures of what is and is not acceptable. It's pretty detailed.
So one other thing that came out of the meeting that we were in with a couple others that are more familiar with the RDAs was this concept of not only setting a percentage for a certain amount of years, but you could also set a threshold to say reimbursement at X amount, and if you hit it in 12 years, you're reimbursed. And maybe that would make some on the commission feel more comfortable, it's like, okay, there's a cap, or, you know, once we hit this, if we outperform everything, well, that's good for the business, because they're bringing in lots of business. They're getting reimbursed what they expected to at that amount, and then maybe, I, I mean, they're still bearing the risk, because after 17 years, it drops off if they're not fully reimbursed. Well, now they're left holding the bag a little bit, but it kind of takes the risk from the county of saying, well, you're also not going to, you know, take more than what was anticipated from the taxpayers, because once you hit this threshold, even if it's at the 12-year mark for the next five years, you've been reimbursed. So maybe that would be a negotiated, you know, way to-
You could, you could put a clause in there that if the property is sold, there can be a review, the RDA has the ability to review the entire agreement to make sure they're still fair and equitable. I mean, there's lots of things we can put in there to protect the county for sure. But I just want to make sure that we're in a good space, that if, we'll start, we'll, we'll put a process together. I think the process will start with a survey area proposal and LOI that we'll review from a county perspective. We'll have a review of that, and then if there's a want to move forward, then they'll come with a survey area resolution. And if that is approved through resolution, then we'll start the process of them coming back and proposing the budget, and all the review of that, and then we'll go through the whole process of the public hearings and then all those types of things. But I think I want to start a process where they have to give us a proposal letter of intent and a proposed area for us to look at even before we get to the board. And then we'll, if there's an agreement to continue to move forward, if it meets, to Josh's point, that there are some certain requirements that it has to meet, then we can start the actual more formalized process, so, but.
So as far as deciding if it's, if we give them basically back on sales tax, that's our decision, or is that something we set up within the RDA that we're not going to, or we're going to?
So I think all those will be proposals that would just come back for a review, that'd be part of the agreement.
Because I know they were giving back sales tax, the doubt was not out of their pocket to begin with.
Yeah, Commissioner McConnell, do they usually, do they do sales, the sales tax request in the RDA, or is that a separate agreement? I'm not sure.
I think it would come through the RDA, but it may require a separate inter-local agreement to get that arranged. That's usually more operational than reimbursement of infrastructure companies. You know, and you, you may have a grocery store tenant that thinks they need operational assistance, and it could be for a different period of time than the infrastructure reimbursement. And frankly, it's for a different person, because the development entity is typically going to do the infrastructure work, and the tenant's going to be putting in and paying for their building and all their fixture and equipment and employees and all of that kind of thing. So, but I think they would both be approved under the auspices of the RDA.
Questions? Are we, are we comfortable at least moving forward then?
So I guess to, yeah, that's the question I want, I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
Okay.
I'd like to definitely learn more and understand.
Well, I'll try to bring somebody in that can work, come to work session and explain a little better than me, but if we're comfortable, then I, I just, if there's huge hesitations right now, we're not ready, I don't want to waste anybody's time. But it seems like we're in a good spot, so I'll start getting the wheels moving forward. And, and we've got to get a process, and I'll work with Josh a little bit on some of those project area designs, even though we may not get it in before our first or second application, but at least we'll be working off the same page. And then I'll put forward a proposal, Commissioner McConnell, can I send that proposal to you on what the process will look like?
Sure.
Maybe we can work through that a little bit, along with Commissioner Fekel.
And I did look, looked on the statute, it looks like we can amend it. Depending on what the nature of the amendment is, it, it depends. It triggers public hearings and inter-local, we don't have any existing inter-local agreements, so.
Is there a thought on who is, like, really a guru on this?
So I have somebody who I feel very comfortable working with, and I feel like has done this for a tremendous period of time, and has done a bunch of them. But, but again, I don't know how, if, if you want to work it under my contract, I could probably figure that out easy. If you want to go outside of the contract, we'd probably have to RFP it. So I think that's a conversation that we can have, but, but at least I know what direction to kind of head up on now, and I appreciate your time, even though we ran a little bit long.
And here you said it was going to be done in 30 minutes.
I did, I did, because I had a meeting at 4:30.
That's my fault, I talk too much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will adjourn as the Morgan County RDA Board. Does anybody need a very quick break?
Yeah. It's me this time.
I need a little break.
Take a very quick break, and then we'll convene as a Morgan County Commission.
Commissioner.
At the very end, uh, hours from now.
So you can come back after your orchestra or whatever.
If you want.
We might, we won't, we won't be.
Hopefully we're not.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Where's your gavel?
Yeah, where's my gavel?
Thanks for turning the heat up.
Yeah, it was very cold.
That was cold.
Mike?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, can we have an update from the sheriff during, because it's not on the agenda?
They still, still won't do that or do we have to make an update to the agenda? Yeah, no, we can, we can do that.
Okay.
I was like uncomfortable, like I was thinking.
Okay, we're going to commence our Morgan County Commission meeting, April 18th, 2023. It's about 10 minutes after 5:00. We will begin with an invocation or moment of reflection and pledge allegiance and Commissioner Wilson has offered to do that.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this evening for the blessings that we have and we enjoy, thankful for the opportunity to serve this community or thank for the members of our community, we're especially thankful for all those who have so graciously and willingly, um, taken of their own time and, and resources to help the flooding victims and help our community through this process. We pray that we can continue to have the weather that we have been blessed with to bring the water down slowly. We are grateful for the water and we're thankful, Father, for the blessing of, um, living in such a great community. We pray that thy Spirit will be with us this evening, help us to make good decisions, help us to think clearly in the things that we say and do. And we pray for the, all the members of this community, that they'll be watched over and protected. We're grateful for our freedoms. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We'll go to our consent items. We have just one item this evening, that is the approval of the April 4th, 2023 meeting minutes. Are there any adjustments to the minutes that have not yet been provided to Julie?
I'm sorry, since I did not get a chance to look at it till today, because it didn't come to me till today. I say let's postpone until next time, unless they're totally accurate from what anybody else is read.
I could look at them quick, I could. Yeah, they weren't in the packet, right?
They weren't in the packet and they didn't get here till today.
Well, there's a version in the packet, but I think you made updates to it after that version, correct?
No.
No, in the first packet that went out, there wasn't?
Oh, it's in the second packet.
The second packet.
Okay, I was going to say, I, I'm seeing it in the packet. I know you sent a separate email with just the minutes as well.
And that should have all been done that night, but.
There was an item in here that you had some question marks on, which one was it?
I couldn't hear, I, actually, I don't think you, you said the Department of something.
UAC, Blaine, it was from your comments, the 30th of March, Blaine met with UAC and US Department of something and spoke about money available through the Energy Block Grant.
Right. Let's see.
Department of Energy, is that what that is?
US Department of, I'm not sure. So I wasn't sure.
Homeland Security.
I don't remember it, let me look.
So on action item number four, um, the postponed planning and development, just on the motion where it says, until such time that the applicant has the will serve letter, instead of saying which it can be, to say, and, and it can be rescheduled at the next available meeting.
It was the E E C B G D A Q. So whoever that was.
Can you say that one more time?
E E C B G. Economic energy, probably. Community building grant or whatever they are, the CB, CBGs.
CBG. Was it G at the end or D?
G is in GOAT.
In item seven, you might want to say seconded by Commissioner Wilson, as opposed to just seconded by Wilson. Sorry, didn't mean to.
Julie, that'd, that'd be Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant.
Okay, thank you.
How's that sound, Blaine?
That sounds right.
Sorry, Commissioner Fackel.
That's fine, you can call me Blaine. Call me whatever you want.
Oh, you're fine. Been called lots worse than that.
Under seven, you know, Commissioner Fackel moved to postpone this item of the use of the gun range until a later date when we have more criteria put in together. I think it should just be put together.
Okay, I have a question on number nine. Commissioner McConnell moved to approve the agreement with applicant pro existing software to add background checks to our portal for, for hiring and I will further, who's the I? Okay, so Robert will further recommend that we do background checks, okay. That would be Commissioner McConnell. And J pack is J P A C.
That's all I see in that minute. Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, April 4th, uh, 2023 meeting minutes as presented and with noted changes.
Second.
Two, motion to approve as amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Declarations of conflicts of interest for commissioners on any item on tonight's agenda. Okay, seen none, we'll move to our public comment period. It's an opportunity for the public to address the commission. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. I've been working on a project with someone and I've been researching code and making a link to the code. I know there've been changes made, you guys make changes all the time, but there've been changes made recently and I don't think the online code is up to date. But to me, that's a little bit worrisome and I, it could, for you guys, it could cause liability issues, but for me, I like to know before I tell somebody how to proceed that I'm giving them correct information. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Josh, Josh, maybe you can look into that for us if you don't mind.
It's, it's on my desk.
Okay.
It's on my desk.
You've got it, okay. Thank you. Okay, seen no additional public comment. Going to break from our agenda just very briefly and ask our sheriff to just come up and give us any update he might have on our current flooding situation. Do you have anything you'd like to share, Sheriff?
No, everything right now is pretty much taking care of our citizens or doing what they're supposed to be doing. Everything seems to be all in line to a good weather.
Awesome.
So you will discuss the other thing during?
You want to do that now?
Well, I'm just curious, we're going to be discussing it during, uh, number seven?
I think it's number seven.
Okay, then I'm not going to worry about it, okay?
Thank you. All right, we'll move to our presentation. We have representatives from Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District here to address us. Come on up.
Oh, I can see that.
All right, thank you for having us. I appreciate the time to come and talk to you today. Um, we just wanted to give you a quick update on our water supply, um, and kind of the flood control we're doing right now to try to mitigate, um, what's going to be coming down from all that snowpack we've got up in the mountains right now.
Do you want to introduce yourselves to us really quick?
Sorry, uh, my name is Riley Olson, I'm the Water Supply and Power Department Manager of Weaver Basin Water.
John Perry, Assistant General Manager.
Thank you, Riley and John.
Yes, just to start off, this is just, um, kind of a look at where we are, um, with the reservoirs right now, the capacity there of each of the reservoirs is shown in that second column in the left. As you can see, we've got about 549,000 acre feet of capacity. Current storage, we're about 274,000 acre feet, which is about 50% of capacity. Um, as many of you are probably aware, we've been dumping the reservoirs or releasing from the reservoirs very hard over the past month, month and a half or so, um, just in anticipation of all that snowpack running off into the reservoirs, um, and trying to mitigate, mitigate flooding problems as much as we can at this point. Um, here's just a quick graphical view of, um, the reservoirs. These are the, the reservoirs we have on the Ogden River. In these graphs, the blue dash line is the five-year average, um, where the reservoirs typically are. The red line is last year and the black line is where we are this year. Um, so here at Cozy, you can see we started, uh, releasing, um, water pretty hard, um, in mid-March or so. Uh, we dropped it pretty good, um, and then just with the warming over the past couple of weeks or so, um, we did see an upturn in that, the inflow, um, with the runoff started to overtake what we were releasing. Um, and then with the cooler temperatures over the past few days, we've started to drop again, so it's good to see. Um, and in Pine View again, about mid-March, we started, uh, releasing very heavily there. Um, we're able to drop the reservoir to about 20% of capacity, um, when just in the past few days or week or so, um, the warmer temperatures started bringing that one back up, overtaking our releases. Um, again, kind of a roller coaster there at this point, um, with just the warmer temperatures and cooling temperatures, um, allowing us to continue to drop it a little bit further.
One thing to note in these graphs is you will see there's a lot of releases being made and, and that really is a realization of the substantial volume of water up the mountains and trying to make space for that runoff to come through. So you'll see we deviate quite drastically from the five-year trends and certainly from last year, but that is because of the, the massive amount of water we anticipate coming down.
So, um, can, sorry, can I add Riley? Cause I know we've had a couple of, um, projects in the river and one in particular that we've had to really try and hold back on the flow, but.
Yeah.
I, I think there might be a little bit of a misconception or understanding that only Weaver Basin controls those flows or air can or has the ability to, but can you just, not in any detail at all, but just who, how, what dictates how you do these and is, is there anybody else involved besides Weaver Basin on that?
Yes, thank you, yeah, appreciate that. So yeah, um, when it comes to flood control, um, essentially releasing water heavily in order to make room for anticipated runoff, um, the Army Corps of Engineers is really who dictates that. They have flood control diagrams and criteria for each of our reservoirs that basically, based on the storage that's in the reservoirs and the forecasted runoff that we're going to get, um, we're basically told, you know, we need to have the reservoir at this level based on what we expect to come in. So it's really dictated by the Army Corps of Engineers. They do follow up and make sure we're kind of following those criteria. Um, we have calls with them on a bi-month or a, um, two-week basis, I guess. Um, and also the Bureau of Reclamation, who owns most of our facilities, um, they're also kind of tracking the flood control, um, criteria from the Army Corps and coordinating with us on all that. So, yeah, it's basically us doing most of the operations with a lot of coordination with the Bureau of Reclamation and the Army Corps of Engineers kind of dictating what needs to happen, so.
Riley, you may get to this later in your presentation, so I apologize if I'm skipping ahead, but how do you determine how much water is up there that you think is going to fill in the reservoirs? I mean, it's kind of hard to, to gauge how much is going to go in the ground and how much is going to run off and.
Yeah.
I know we have snow tell signs and sites and stuff, but what's kind of the, the method to figure that out? Cause it, it seems like the balance is trying to say, okay, let's get this as full as we can without going over the overflow so we can control the water, right?
Exactly, it's a very fine line that we're trying to, to walk there. Um, and luckily, there's a lot smarter people than me that actually try to, um, are the ones forecasting what's going to come down. It's the Colorado Basin River Forecast Center. Um, they've got forecasters, hydrologists that basically look at all the different variables that come into the runoff, um, including, you know, the snowpack obviously, soil moisture going into the fall, cause, um, once you start warming up, you know, that'll dictate how much of the, the snowpack is just going to run right into the ground and whenever we're going to see it in the reservoirs. Um, so yeah, they're looking at those two things, um, they're trying to predict what the weather's going to be in the spring, uh, how it's going to come down. Um, so they're, they're taking all those things into account, um, and then giving us basically their best guess or educated guess on, um, how much we're actually going to get into each of the reservoirs. So, and then, um, then R C L, the N R C S also does the same type of thing. They put out, um, runoff forecasts as well, so we look at both the C B R F C and the N R C S forecast, compare them, and usually they're, um, in very close correlation with each other, so that's just kind of a double check we do to make sure we can have good comfort level on what they're telling us, so.
So I'm assuming you've projected then like your target level where you need the reservoir to be before those releases from the mountains start really flowing?
Yeah, and that's where those, um, Army Corps of Engineer flood control diagrams come in and at this point, most of the reservoirs, those diagrams are telling us we need the reservoirs empty. So obviously, we're not going to get there, um, but just with the immense snowpack we have this year, the record snowpack, um, yeah, essentially they're wanting us to have the reservoirs empty in order to absorb as much of that snowpack peak, runoff peak as we can, um, without, you know, while we have controlled releases before it goes away and we lose control, so.
So the Ogden River, I just saw pictures of it, I mean, it's like running at the brink.
Yes.
Is that because of what you're letting out or is it getting it is?
Yep, yeah, we're basically, so, um, the Army Corps of Engineers and, um, um, I don't know who else would be involved, um, they have what they call, um, safe channel capacities for all the streams, um, and, or streams and rivers that we release into. Um, so right now at Pine View or on the Ogden River, we're basically releasing that safe channel capacity, um, basically what they tell us we can do, um, without, you know, while we're still, um, doing controlled releases. Um, obviously, once we start spilling and lose control, obviously that safe channel capacity, um, is kind of, goes out the window and it's all in Mother Nature's hands at that point.
May I ask a question along with the same lines?
Yeah, for sure.
So, let's just look at nature and let's say, for instance, we have a perfect runoff where nature takes care of itself and we have cool, warm, cool, warm, and it just kind of seeps into the soil and then we don't fill up the reservoirs. What's the likelihood? Because, I mean, I was around during the last flooding. So was a few others in here.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, that's something that I just, you know, with all the prayers to get water.
Yep.
And the prayers to now control the water release is, I mean, we might be blessed and we might not. So if that happens and you've got the reservoirs empty, then what happens?
Yeah, it'd be a bad day for sure, obviously. Um, so it's, I would say it's very unlikely and I don't know, John, you have any other thoughts on that, but?
I would agree and I think, you know, these, these forecasting tools that Riley's making reference to, these, these are being referred to daily and modifications are being made of the projected forecast based on exactly what you said. How is, how's the weather pattern playing out? Are we continuing to see accumulations of snowpack of this upper elevations? Are we warming up drastically? What are the trends showing? And these forecasts that say 300,000 acre feet of water might jump to 280 or they might jump to 320, but they fluctuate. He'll show you some of these, these forecasted runoffs and what they've done over the course of this year, but, uh, this isn't a, we look at it once a week or once a month and make adjustments. This is daily.
Couple times a day.
Multiple times during the day that we're looking at these forecasts, we're looking at how the runoff's coming down, we're looking at the soil moistures and what they're doing to gauge the runoff efficiency and see, you know, is this going to be, you know, infiltrated in the groundwater system? Are we going to see it efficiently coming down into the creeks and subsequently being gathered in the reservoirs? And so this is, you know, Riley shortchanged himself, but, uh, we use all those tools and resources, but we've also been doing this for 70 years, right? And Riley's not 70 years old, obviously, but he's, he's got all of the information that's been garnered from other staff that have been around for a lot longer than him and, and records and data that we've gathered to really make sure we're honing in on what happens here. But it is a daily, multiple time day assessment that takes place and will take place over the next, you know, it has since January and it will continue through, you know, June, July, as long as the runoff goes.
All right, uh, so quickly just moving over to the Weaver River side of things. Here we can see Rockport and Echo again. Um, Rockport, we started, um, releasing water, um, in pretty early February, um, just as we started to see that snowpack build and, uh, Rockport was still quite high. Obviously, we were above the five-year average there, so we started, uh, releasing just to kind of start anticipating that runoff and to generate power with. Um, Echo, um, as Commissioner Anderson mentioned, we did have a, um, contractor working in the river, um, that we were dealing with. We tried to hold back releases as long as we could, um, but working with the Army Corps of Engineers, they were, um, of Engineers, they were pretty insistent that we needed to start upping those releases, especially starting on April 1st, so.
And Riley, I apologize, there was another graph I saw a while back that, that actually showed how far behind we were.
Yeah.
Do you have that?
I do.
Are you going to show that tonight?
Yep, it's a little later on in the presentation, but we'll get there. So then looking at Lost Creek and East Canyon. Lost Creek is kind of the better looking reservoirs right now as far as flood control goes and it was just within the past few weeks where we were starting to have to make releases there based on those forecasts. You know, initially, earlier on in the winter, we weren't thinking we were going to have to make any flood control releases there, but with March, the, the huge amount of precipitation and snowpack we accumulated in March, those forecasts for runoff just shot up, skyrocketed and kind of forced us to start making releases there as well. East Canyon, we've been releasing hard from since about mid-March as well or late March, as you guys are aware. We are, we have been at about safe channel capacity there, actually working with the county, Austin Turner. We've been working with him pretty closely and we've actually crept up above that 250 CFS a little bit just to try to get as much water out of East Canyon as we can before Hardscrabble Creek really starts spilling. So potentially we can cut back from East Canyon a little bit at that time. Here's Smithmore House. This is a very small reservoir, doesn't really serve any flood control purpose, so it's not going to do much in terms of slowing down the runoff up there, that far reach of the watershed. But we have started dumping it, especially today, we, we increased the releases there quite significantly to try to get it down and flow as we can. Willard Bay, so Willard Bay is at the kind of bottom of the watershed there. It's off-stream. That's where we've been trying to collect all the water that we've been releasing. It's kind of our catch-all. And we've got the Willard Canal that comes off of the Weber River in Slatorville. That canal has a capacity of about 1,000 CFS, so we're taking about 1,000 CFS out to Willard Bay consistently. So that's why that's been climbing so, so well. And the capacity there is about 222,000 acre feet overall and we do anticipate filling it within the next few weeks. And once we hit that point, we have the ability to release 1,000 CFS out the outlet works, the other end of the reservoir. So basically, we'll just be routing 1,000 CFS from the river through Willard Bay and out to the Great Salt Lake, just to try to alleviate flooding on the west end of the Weber River. Now, just a quick look at snowpack, kind of show you why we're seeing the runoff forecast we are. Obviously, most of you have probably seen this graph several times this year. There kind of towards the middle of that colorful area, you can see the median, it's that light green line. That's where we typically see the snowwater equivalent on a normal year. The black line there is 2023 this year. You can see we're well above any of the historical trends there. We're in record territory. We actually peaked out at about 193% of where we typically hit the peak. So that is very historic snowpack for us and why these runoff forecasts are so high. And then I have also shown there 1984, 1983 and 2011, because those are some similar snowpack type years, just to kind of show you where we're at in comparison with all, with all of those in the Weber and Ogden drainages. So we're definitely above where we've been in any of those kind of high years there. Then on the left there in that box, you can see as of today, we're about 227% of the median snowpack and about 181% of the median peak. So these are these runoff forecasts I was telling you about. These were, these are from the CBRFC, the Colorado Basin River Forecast Center. There on the far left, you can see each of our kind of forecast areas, which are kind of our main reservoirs, flood control reservoirs. That next column, second from the left, is typically what we see on a normal year come into the reservoirs. That next column over is the current forecast and then the far right column is the percent of the average that that current forecast is. So you can see Rockport Echo, the forecast is for about 200% of the typical runoff. East Canyon, 325%, that's the highest one we've got, which is why we've been trying to release water so, so heavily from it. Lost Creek, we're at 246%, Pine View, 280, for a total overall 241% of average runoff forecast. So definitely got a lot of water that we're trying to get down as safely and controlled as possible. So we're doing our best there.
So Echo, Rockport has a combined storage capacity of about 130,000 acre feet. And you can see the forecast is three here, yeah, 303. So that's, you know, essentially filling and emptying.
Twice.
And Pine View's 110,000 acre feet. So you can see between this graph and that previous one, you know, we typically have about 20 inches that we get in the snowpack and we, we see 40. So it's a massive amount.
What's, what's Lost Creek?
Lost Creek has a capacity of about 20,000.
Yeah, so a lot of water to come down. And so these are just some of the current releases that we're making for flood control. Cozy, we're basically maxed out at our power plant there. We're putting out about 135 CFS. If you look at the river gauge there on the south fork of the Ogden River though, you'll see about 510 CFS. And that's from other tributaries, site tributaries that are uncontrolled and just kind of the low-level and mid-level snowpack that is below the reservoir there. Pine View, we're releasing about 1,305 CFS. On the gauge there below Pine View Dam though, you'll see 1,500 CFS in the river and that's due to Wheeler Creek, which is an uncontrolled tributary there. Rockport, we're releasing about 615 CFS. Echo, we're at about 1130. Lost Creek, 155 and East Canyon, 250, between 250 and 300.
So 1 CFS is about 2 acre feet a day.
Any, any plans of having any more, putting any more reservoirs in?
Not that I'm aware of.
We don't build them anymore, we just take them down.
There does seem to be a shift in policy over the last several decades. We raised Willard about eight years ago, two feet. That's about 20,000 acre feet of storage and in that process, we already had the water rights secured for the storage of that additional 20,000 acre feet of water and it was probably a 15-year process.
And that's just expanding.
And that's, that's where you have water rights secured. If you look at, you know, policy that's being driven by the state right now, I don't think there's any development project that comes through without mitigation measures to offset the releases.
That's done by the state?
Correct. State engineer.
All right. So I believe these are the graphs that Commissioner Anderson was referring to. So these are just going to be a quick comparison of basically what our runoff forecast is compared to some other big years, specifically 2011 in blue and 2017 in orange. Again, black is where we are this year. So these first couple we'll look at are Pine View. So this is the forecast again, kind of what we're getting from the CBRFC. You can see there, we are well above at this point where we were in 2011 and 2017 as far as how much water we're expecting to get into Pine View reservoir. So looking at storage, again, 2017 and 2011, they're shown versus our black line this year. And you see we're well below where we have been in those two big years and it's been a long time since Pine View's been this low in fact. So that's just in anticipation of receiving all that runoff and trying to route through as much of it as possible without, you know, losing control and spilling over the spillway.
Those are going to be all vertical lines here shortly, probably.
Yeah. Yep, exactly. As soon as we get some warm temperatures and that runoff really starts coming in, it's going to be crazy. So this is a look at, a comparison of the releases over those few years. And you can see in 2017, the orange line, we were making pretty heavy releases early and I, I think that was in anticipation of the Weber River peaking or later in the season. So we were trying to get as much water out of the Ogden side early and then we could worry about the Weber side later so that we didn't have that peak hitting all at once out of Plain City, kind of the west end of the Weber River. And then on the, in 2011, it was kind of the opposite. We were getting rid of water out of, oops. Yeah, 2011, we were releasing pretty heavily from Pine View during the later part of the spring runoff time. As I mentioned, 1,600 CFS is about kind of our safe channel capacity right below the dam. So right now, we're at about 1,300 CFS with Wheeler Creek, about 1,500 CFS. You can see back in these two years, we got to 1,700 and 1,800 CFS and that's due to releases through the power plant further down the canyon as well. So they didn't necessarily add into the, the flow in the river directly downstream of the dam. So that's how we were able to get above that 1,600 CFS. So next we'll look at Echo. So again, this is the comparison of our forecasted runoff. You can see we're just below where we were, or where the forecast was this time of year in 2011 and we're well above where we were in 2017 at this time. Then storage and Echo, again, well below where we were in 2017, slightly below where we were in 2011. Again, you can see here, you know, April 1st, about when we were basically being told by the Army Corps of Engineers, we need to increase those releases pretty heavily. So that's when we started really dropping it. You can see at that point, we were above where we were in 2011 with a similar forecast and the Army Corps was getting very nervous about that. And the trend or the slope of that line was just not looking where they wanted to see it. So that's really why they, they wanted us to start dropping that reservoir so hard.
Riley, how does the, the anticipated runoff this year compare to 2011?
If you'll go back one slide. Yeah, so 2011, we're just below where we were. So, and these forecast graphs are kind of probably a little confusing to look at. So these lines are showing basically what the Colorado Basin River Forecast Center is anticipating to runoff throughout the whole season, runoff season, from April through July. And so whether the forecast we're looking at here was on, you know, January 22nd, it's still kind of forecasting that entire range of runoff, or I guess April, sorry, April, that entire range of runoff. And kind of same towards the end, you know, even the forecast that comes out in June, it's basically telling us how much runoff we're going to get from April through July. And so, yeah, obviously by the time you get to the end of the season, numbers are a little more concrete. We've already seen a lot of that runoff come in. And in 2011, we were getting a lot of late-season snowpack accumulation. So April and May, we were still getting snow up in the high elevations. So that forecast just kept coming up, so.
But snowpack wise, I mean, what's, what's up there this year compared to what was there this time of year in 2011?
So that was a graph we showed several slides ago.
Sorry, that one, okay.
Yep. So you can see right now, right there, we peaked down in 2011 right there. So we're, right now, we're still well above where we were at that point, so. And yeah, like John mentioned, I think we got 40 inches of snowwater equivalent, whereas the, the typical, where we typically hit the peak is about 21. So a lot of water.
Yeah, what's scary right now is those steep declines in the spring season. If we get a, you know, if you look at the median, it's a pretty tapered decline, which allows you to have that controlled runoff. And you get that 1983 where you continue to add to the snowpack well into the, the spring season, then you get those temperatures that just shift drastically. You don't have two months to make room for it's coming down in a couple, you know, two, three weeks.
So we hope that we already hit our peak is what you're saying?
Yeah.
We don't know if we did though yet, because it could go back up.
Yeah.
So again, the other thing to see on these graphs right here is just the spread, right? If you were starting to plan for runoff in January, I mean, you were planning this year for 140,000 acre feet. And then you can see every week it's gone up and down a little bit, up. So it's, you gotta look at these things all the time.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so this is just a comparison of the releases, 2011, 2017 and this year. And you can see 2011, we were making some pretty high releases right now at this point, but we're well above where we were in 2017. And you can see in 2011, we even got to, you know, just over 2,000 CFS in early June probably. So we're hoping by making some of these larger releases right now that we'll avoid getting up that high, but again, just all going to depend on how the, the spring temperatures happen and how it all comes down. And then this is my last slide. This is just a quick look at the, the temperature and precipitation outlook. This is actually for April, so we're halfway through this already. But this, you know, obviously we, like some of you mentioned, we want to see kind of a warm-up, a cool-down, warm-up, cool-down, just so we can bring it down a little more slowly, not all at once like John mentioned. And this is kind of what we're seeing so far. In the past few weeks, we have seen a warm-up, a cool-down, another warm-up and a cool-down. So that's what we want to see for, for the rest of April. The National Weather Service, NOAA, is anticipating that we're going to see below normal temperatures and drier than normal precipice. So it's definitely good for what we're trying to do and hopefully these come to fruition.
Sketchy predictions at best.
Yeah, that's true. Don't put too much stock in them.
I, I'll believe Blaine's woolly worms more than that. They were right this year.
They were right.
He's already telling us that.
Yeah, he better tell you.
Well, this one was found in January.
All right. Any questions for John and Riley? We sure appreciate you taking the time to come up and visit with us and appreciate the work you're doing to try to mitigate flooding as best we can and we'll hope for, hope and pray for the best.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity and we'll keep working closely with you.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question?
Yes.
Okay. Right now, East Canyon is within, that far going over in a majority of places. If that happens, are you going to stop the flow up there? Because, I mean, at least from there until Hardscrabble, because Hardscrabble hasn't kicked in since we had the cool now.
Yeah.
And so I'm just wondering, okay, if all of a sudden Hardscrabble starts coming down, East Canyon is letting it out, can you stop that so that Hardscrabble can, because we're going to have some homes destroyed?
Yeah, we can definitely, and like I mentioned, I've been working with Austin Turner pretty heavily. You know, I've been talking with him at least every other day the past couple of weeks and we have been making adjustments based on those conversations. He's been telling me, you know, when Hardscrabble's flowing on the really warm days, he'll give me a call, ask me to dial it back a little bit at East Canyon. And yeah, we've been working a little bit that way together. I think we've got it down to, you know, like I said, we're about 250 CFS between 250 and 300 right now. That, I think it was last weekend, last week, when we were having the warmer temperatures, we dialed it back to 190 because Hardscrabble was flowing pretty good and there were some other tributaries and just low-level snow melt that was just causing a lot of issues for you guys. So yeah, we're definitely willing to work with you. It's going to be, it'd be very hard to shut it off completely with the Army Corps of Engineers, what they're telling us to do. But yeah, we can definitely work with you as best as we can.
We're going to dance that line all year.
So we'll see how you do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Maybe our, maybe our second meeting in July, we ought to have a report.
Yep.
All right. We'll move to our action items. Ms. Blackett and Ms. Gale.
Hi, we are the cheerleaders for Morgan High School. The cheerleaders will be providing a service to the county by putting up flags for all these holidays. Memorial Day, Flag Day, Independence Day, Pioneer Day, Labor Day, 9/11 and Veterans Day. The cost is $30 for one flag for all of these holidays. In the past, the county has purchased 12 flags. Is this something the county would like to do again and if so, how many flags?
I think that's a great thing to do. We've been doing this for a long time.
That's actually a great presentation.
That's a great presentation too. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm definitely in favor of doing it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Terry, I'll make a motion. I have to do 12 flags.
I, I agree, but do you guys need more than 12 flags? Why 12, do you know?
I don't know. I don't either.
Okay. That was the even number they came up with at one point. If you want to make a motion for more, go for it.
I just think it's a great service that you guys provide, not just for the county, throughout the county. Phenomenal service. Sorry, Commissioner McConnell.
Well, do you want me to increase the number of flags?
I don't know, just curious, but.
My motion was 12 flags. I'll stick with it.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, ladies. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. All right. And number two, Julie.
So I just gave you guys some examples of what we could purchase if you would like, but there is, I don't have a budget for an HR, so this would have to come from somewhere else. And I've just noticed that we get a lot of pamphlets given to us at the table that are getting covered with them. And so my suggestion is that we either buy a display case that would go out in the foyer where it's like bigger and everything is facing forward so people can see the slots and see the items, or we just get a small one to put right here so that we can stack them in there. But it's just an idea, whatever you guys would like to do. It's just, I'm getting a lot of, they bring them to my room a lot, they bring them to the front office, and nobody has space to put anything like that. So we fill up the bulletin boards, and just wanted to know if you'd like to provide that service for the community.
I'd like to make a suggestion before we purchase it, that you look at public surplus and see if any other counties are getting rid of it. That would save a cost.
Do we have anything, we may even have something at the library.
Yeah, we might.
Doesn't seem like a bad idea to have a location to put that kind of stuff.
There is a small one out in the foyer area, but it's a circular one, and it's whole. I took out anything that was old in it, but nobody has even noticed it because it is this tiny little circular thing that sits in a corner. Nobody pays any attention to it.
I'd be interested. I think we just need to find out what the costs are. I think the idea is a good one in terms of...
Well, number three was not a bad cost, and it looked like a...
130 bucks, is that the one you were...
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like we're talking between 130 and...
200.
30 or something.
No, yeah, that's not much. And free shipping.
Okay. Do we want to make any motion on this, then, to... What's your thoughts?
I, I don't mean to go on a little bit of a tangent here, but most departments have office and supplies budget. And so if they want to get a new chair, they're obviously not going to come before the commission and saying, hey, I'm going to get a new chair. So I, I appreciate you coming before us to say, hey, this is going to be something new that's going to be placed in the hall. But I'm not sure, I really am very, very indifferent on the cost or with it being so minimal, doesn't even, I mean, unless you've got to change your budget for it.
Yeah, she doesn't have it in her budget.
I don't have it, I didn't consider it an HR budget item. It's more like community service, so I didn't know where it should come out of. But I don't have it in my budget for this year. I can alter that, or we can use funds from somewhere else if there's funds available for something like this. I, I didn't know. I just see the need from what I've experienced.
Yeah, grounds of maintenance is probably what I would suggest it comes from. I don't know what we have available, but that would be, Brett oversees that department ultimately.
$300, we may have it in the council budget.
That's true. We have a, we have a budget that we don't...
Spend?
Spend typically.
So it looks to me like this one, the fixture displays literature rack.
It's $200.
$200, looks like it has the greatest capacity.
Yeah, that's number three. I guess it's $200. 45 pockets.
Whoa. You're right. We have a, we have a supplies budget that we rarely use. We could probably just pay for it out of that and be done with it.
I'll make a motion that we give the go-ahead to purchase number three, the $200 display, and take it out of our budget for supplies from the commission budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And my reasoning, may I just mention a reasoning, is if we purchase this one, that, and the motion was to purchase this one, what about if we find the same kind of a thing at a lesser price through, like, public surplus, or from the library, or wherever, from another entity?
Are you sure you're going to go for this purchase?
Let's look into it. I think we also ought to consider, if we have to go very far to get it, you're probably going to end up spending almost as much in fuel to go get it as you would. So, but we could certainly look into it, and it's an option, great.
But other than that, I'll say nay, or aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Either way. Okay. Commissioner Fackrell?
Okay. Next item was brought to my attention. Where did my... We have a bunch of these that Jared got, these coins. And my question is, is are they going to continue to sit in the HR office, or are we going to do something with them? And are we going to have a plan to distribute these as tokens, souvenirs, whatever we want to do? I'm just trying to help out the storage of these coins. That's all.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys remember when I brought them to, to us, I think it was eight months ago or so, and asked the same question, just didn't, didn't follow on us. I appreciate you following up on it.
How many do we have?
Couple hundred, I think.
400, I thought.
Yeah. And who are you proposing that they be distributed to?
That's what, that's what the discussion is.
So when, when we had the Lieutenant Governor and her group come, she has some commemorative coins, and she gave me one, and I went and got those coins and gave to all of her group. I think it's good to have a few of those on hand for, for that purpose, to share with other public officials. Just that's kind of a...
Yeah, I just don't know if we want to go and...
But we certainly don't need 400 for that.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we by chance go to any of our events that we go to, you know, a lot of times they'll give out those of their own counties, but yet we have nothing to give to anybody as just a token of our, you know, hey, here's Morgan County. Hey, we are in, we are on the map. You know, just as a thought. I'm, I mean, I'm just, or we can give it to the library to have the library...
I've never been given anything from anybody. Maybe I'm not as friendly as you are.
See, you've got to go to them first, but anyway.
There's no maybe in that. I'm not as friendly.
But I mean, we've got a, you know, the Lieutenant Governor, you know, I got one from her, I've got one from Box Elder County, the Sheriff's Department.
I think we ought to make you our...
Ambassador. I am already...
To the coin hand-outter.
Coin, coinman?
I, I don't really care. I just don't want to go and say, hey, I'd like 10 of them to take with me to the Trails Conference and, you know, give it to somebody, or something like that.
Didn't we talk about giving them to all of our employees, too? Did we do that?
We did. We didn't do that, but we talked about it.
But we haven't done it yet.
I think we ought to do that initially.
Uh huh.
So I have a suggestion, Chair and Commissioner Fackrell, because you put this on the agenda. I really think in a quick email chain, and maybe the suggestions come from you, Commissioner Fackrell, saying, hey, here's my ideas. We can massage them a little bit and then just come to an agreement.
Well, I certainly am not opposed to any members of the commission taking them to these events and handing them out. I mean, that, we've got to get, we should distribute them one way or another. And if we want to distribute them to employees to reduce the number of boxes right now, that would be a good thing. Maybe we set some out on a table. When they're picking up a brochure, if somebody wants one of our coins, they can have one of those, too.
And maybe us non-so-friendly commissioners need to put, hand out more. It'll break us out of our shell.
Sounds good.
I can use this as a project.
Okay. All right. So are we going to give them to the employees first? We need to make sure if that's the case, we give one to every employee first, and then we can start.
I like the idea of doing that, just to...
Okay. And who's going to do that?
I think we already made that decision.
Our coins are.
Okay, then we need to just send it out to all of Morgan employees and everything within the county that says, if you want a coin, come see the HR.
Full-time employees.
Can you send that out, please?
Full, full-time employees.
Full-time?
You could put it next to your treats.
Sure.
Yeah, that's an idea, too.
There's probably a couple of people in this room that have put in enough hours in this, this room, they probably ought to get them some one if they want one, too.
That's right. That's right. Planning commission and all.
I think the idea of a challenge coin is supposed to go hand-to-hand. It's supposed to go from one of you to the hand of the person.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, it's a challenge coin.
Yeah.
We, we talked about at one point doing kind of a summer activity for our employees.
No slingshots, Commissioner.
Maybe we, maybe we do it then and hand them out then? We could do that?
I think that's a good idea, too. I'm okay with whatever you want. I just know, if you want me to be the ambassador for Morgan County, I will take some with me to my different events and hand some out.
I think you kind of are already, so...
I am.
Well, I think all of us ought to take a few to some of those, those things and hand them out if we figure something's wrong.
What kind of uniform comes with being the ambassador?
I don't know. Just a jacket and a...
Okay.
I wish I could just wear my coveralls. It doesn't work.
You can wear your coveralls.
One of the days, I might just wear them here.
You have a time or two. Maybe not for the commission meeting, though.
Oh, shucks.
All right. Commissioner Wilson, ladder truck.
Ladder truck's already been approved. We just, we're going to ratify that so we can make the payment to them, and they can pick that up. So I attached the invoice with that.
Okay. I have a question with that. I was approached. What fund is that going to come out of?
We said the general fund.
Non-departamental? Does it need to do all that?
No, we'll have to, we'll have to transfer the money. I would say we transfer it to the fire department, take it out of one of their accounts.
Okay.
Or, or fleet, probably fleet, huh?
From the general fund.
Move it into the fleet budget and then pay for it out of there. But that'll have to be a budget amendment that we do with Leslie.
So, so we'll have to let Leslie know, make sure of that for our next budget resolution.
She would like to have GL numbers, not just in general, if you guys have GL numbers for it.
I'll just go see her.
What we need is a cheat sheet of GL numbers, and then we could call that out in every meeting. Or as part of our requirements to have on the agenda. Yeah, that, too.
So do we still need a foreign motion to ratify?
Yes.
We do. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we ratify the purchase of a 2002 Pierce-75-foot ladder truck from Syracuse City in the amount of $100,000, with the funds to come from the fund balance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, Garrett.
Oh, all right. And this is also with Kyle Hooker, who's here. Do you want to come on up?
Kyle?
So this is ratification, or no, this is a renewal of a property lease agreement for some property at the Morgan County Fairgrounds. And I think Kyle could give some of the history, but I think one of the great things about barefoot tubing is they were looking for a way to get some of the taxes to come back to the county, because most tubers start in Summit County, and they take the taxes where the adventure starts, so to speak. And so Kyle's made a lot of efforts to bring the starting to our county so that the county can collect taxes, and then he takes them up, and then they end in the county. So just thought I'd throw that out there. And would you say that this started in 2014?
Started right before the big water of 2011. I know that year well, because we didn't get started until the 17th of July that year. So these guys talking about the water coming down is very interesting. So, but barefoot tubing, we're just basically, you know, here to redo the lease again. This is my third time coming before you gentlemen, and it changes every five years. But really not a whole lot of change, other than upping the rent a little bit and trying to get a little more parking where we are, so we don't have people on the street. We don't like people parking on the street. That's not, we don't like that, so...
So the, the agreement that I emailed around is one that I had kind of redlined because I can't find a digital copy of this agreement. I did copy it over into a Word document, but it messed up all the formatting, and I have not completed that. And so I think if you look at it, some of the main things that would be updated on page one, it's just updating the dates. And so it would be executed today. The term would be from July 1st, 2023, to the last day of June, 2028. So just kind of updating the dates. It also acknowledges that that 100 by 200 feet that's been used for parking would be extended to 150 and by 250 feet, which just gives that parking and allows for more safety. And also on the first page, it would increase the, the annual rent by...
$1,000.
$1,000, so... In, on page two, paragraph five, it talks about improvements as shown on Exhibit B. The Exhibit B that I attached here was just my own approximation of what that extension of the parking lot would be. And I, I did not get with Kyle to provide me an updated exhibit, but I think we could, we could do that, just acknowledging that extension, if it's granted tonight, for the, for the final signature. Maintenance of the premises under paragraph six, I did have a note here that I wanted Kyle to discuss the water lines, because it's my understanding that our Public Works put in some water lines and, and didn't replant the grass that he had planted. And so I think there was just some questions and clarification there.
That's not a big deal.
Okay, okay.
The main reason is because we're going to not be able to get started till the middle of July this year. It's going to be a, a very sparse year, just like two years ago was a sparse year, because we had to close early, because remember, the water got shut off early. So Park City Rafting, actually, all the rafting companies were done by July 31st. And it just got all shut down. But, so, I think that grass is probably going to grow back, because we're not going to be driving on it in June or early July this year. So I usually spread some seed around and try to get it to grow, so it's, it's nice and pretty.
So are you, what are you changing? Are you starting at, at that point and then driving them up there and dropping them off?
Yeah, so we start, so here's the deal, is there's, there's really very little parking up at the top, and there's a lot of people that are going up, up at the top that are private tubers. And so years ago, we decided, first of all, I own Park City Rafting also, which is at Taggart's. So all of, both of the rafting, I mean, I've been in recreation for 38 years, so doing rafting and stumple building and tubing. Tubing's really grown, you probably noticed that. Part of it is us, and part of it is just private people that go on their own. But we started, we started our building, check them in, and then we drive them up, do a little five-minute orientation, so you know how to operate these technical high-piece equipment, you know, the tube. But, and then we pick them up at Taggart, and we bring them out down to the building. Because there's very little parking at Taggart. I'm sure you've been there on a weekend, or you've tried to drive by or seen it from the freeway. It's, it's pretty, pretty bad. So we really don't have any impact on the parking. We just pick up and drop off, and that's where, you know, having the, where we are is good. It's also good, because people that are going tubing with us, they're also gassing up and buying stuff at the stores and all that stuff. So I kind of like to keep things local if we can. Summit County has enough stuff going on.
Yeah, they do.
And I work there in the winter time, so, yeah. Questions?
Yes, I have a few. I always have questions, guys. Okay, approximately, how many people do you have come through your company at our location?
For barefoot tubing, usually it's between 10,000 and 12,000 people a summer. But two years ago, it was a lot less than that. Our, we, our, our season is usually about 12, 12 weeks, basically the middle of June till the first weekend in September. But when we have a year like this one, or two years ago, when they shut the water off, we ended up getting seven weeks out of a 12-week season. But when we have a year like this one, or two years ago when they shut the water off, we ended up getting seven weeks out of a twelve-week season, so.
Just too dangerous right now?
Way too, yeah, way too high, way too fast, way too cold, so we will not run the river. I mean, we don't let people go if they're under twelve, if they're like, you know, really out of shape or if they're like really old or frail. I mean, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to get people in a box that's safe. And that being said, we can't control everybody, but we, I mean, I've told people it's not, you just can't go. And I can say that 'cause I've been doing this stuff all my life and sometimes I'm a pretty good judge of that sort of thing, but. So we really don't have a lot of injuries and accidents and stuff like that. Our tubes are pretty darn durable. You won't ever see one of our tubes on the side of the river because they cost over a hundred bucks each and I think I had one that deflated last year out of like ten thousand people who went down the river with us. So we don't get any garbage. We don't get the tubes. In fact, we clean up the garbage. We send rafts down on Monday mornings and pick up all the Walmart crap that keeps it going down.
So your Park City Rafting?
Yes.
Is that yours also?
I started Park City Rafting in 1996.
Okay, so your Park City Rafting, they start over there in Park City?
No, it's called Park City Rafting because people didn't know there was any rafting back in 1996.
Okay.
So we called it that. It starts at Taggart and that's where our building is. And then we, so we check them in there and then we drive them up, put them on the river with the guides and the equipment, come back down, get off at Taggart, walk back over to the building.
And the building's over towards?
Our building is just
Restaurant?
Two hundred yards past the restaurant.
Okay, east of it then.
What?
East of it?
Uh, I don't know, east or west.
Well, it can't be west, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just know it's up the road 'cause there's not much of a road there. It's like the restaurant, couple houses.
Okay, all right.
And then Jack's property.
All right.
All right.
And then my question on all of this is the movability of your whole operation. If we had to move it to the other side of the river or whatever we might have to do if there's some kind of project that we're working on that we need to go through there, what, how will that affect your operation?
That's a great question. Five years ago, when we, when I came and we signed the lease, we were actually gonna move us across the street to where the pickleball courts are because we were talking about putting in a campground where we are now. And so we did that, but then every year I was like, well, we're not gonna do it yet, not gonna do it yet. So we stayed where we were and then they built pickleball courts. And I was like, oh, wow, I guess we're not moving across the street. And, uh, which is fine 'cause moving, I've got a, I've got a container and I've got a little building. It is, it is movable. I mean, I could pay somebody to put it on a flatbed and move it, so. We're not married to the location, if that's what you're asking. We can move it. I don't know how hard it would be, but we could move it.
Is there any way that you could maybe paint your container and make it look, say, barefoot tubing or something like that?
So, I try. Here's the thing.
I'm just trying to make it look good for our tourism.
Right, right, right.
We're trying to, we're trying to bring here, which would affect, it will help you.
So, so people aren't gonna accidentally drive by barefoot tubing and say, oh, let's go tubing. It's just, people make reservations online. They know about us from, you know, word of mouth and from going before and or they come down the river on their own and their Walmart crapper's popped and then they saw us floating by, you know. I try to keep it as low profile as possible because we're closed for nine and a half months out of the year and I, I've had people break into the building and try to rip the container doors off. If I can keep people from not seeing it, then I have less problems with people vandalizing and stuff. I don't put big signs up. I mean, I can.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm just trying to make it to where it's a pleasant place for those tourists that come from out of town to come and, you know, okay, we've got Destination Sports, but what about barefoot tubing? I mean, that's part of the plan
Yeah.
is to utilize all these companies within Morgan County.
Yeah, and bring tourism.
And to bring tourism here. I mean, somebody may not wanna go on a raft, but they do wanna go on a tube.
Yeah.
So that's all I'm saying is, is beautify it.
Yeah. Well, when the grass is growing, it's actually quite pretty there.
So.
Right. Last year it was a bunch of dirt 'cause it got knocked out.
Okay.
But yeah, I, I hear what you're saying.
All right. And so as far as in Park City Rafting, you don't have any location over in Summit County?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, I just work there in the winter time, but that has nothing to do with this. So I watch all that water accumulate up there at Deer Valley where I work.
Well, my concern was just the prices, other than those ones I've already mentioned.
My only question or thought was, most of our lease agreements for other property have a, an automatic increase clause. It's a small percentage typically, but three to four percent. It just says it goes up by three percent every year. We've done that with our airport leases, our cell tower leases, et cetera. I don't know if that's something we'd like to do here, but it may be something to consider. Granted, it's going up this, this time.
If you'd rather, if you'd rather take the three thousand that we've paid the last five years and take it up five or six percent, I'd be all day long out. But on a calculator, I can tell that's less than twenty-five percent.
This is a short-term lease.
Yeah, this is a short-term lease and so maybe it's not that big a deal 'cause we do an increase. I mean, yes, we're increasing it this time, but I think the increase is because we're increasing the space, not just simply.
I really wanna keep people off the road. I wanna be able to get them in our area and not have them all over there.
Off of the road.
Yeah.
So I'm okay with the rate as it is. I just was throwing that out there in case that was something.
This is, this is kind of side to that. Usually, so when we first started, we didn't know how successful it would be and so we had, we paid a thousand dollars on July 1st and a thousand dollars on December 1st. And then the second time it came around, I was like, you know what, I'm just gonna pay it once 'cause I don't wanna have to worry about paying something in December when I'm busy snowmobiling. And, uh, but now it's up to four thousand dollars and I am not gonna be making any money till the middle of July. Can we just do a one-time thing where I can pay like August 1st just this year? I mean.
I don't have an issue.
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, we don't need to change anything. I would just pay when I start making some money, 'cause otherwise I, you know. It's gonna be a tough year this year because it's not gonna be.
How much do you think you contribute to the sales tax when you do your sales tax every year?
That is a darn good question and I really don't know. My wife is a tax accountant and she does all that stuff.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I mean, I, I, I know about what we gross.
Well, there's certainly more revenue in sales tax than nothing.
Well, no, I'm, what I'm trying to do is
Ten to twelve thousand people.
Uh, I'm, I'm just kinda curious if you're willing to at a later point is talk with our tourism group.
Yeah.
Our tourism board and then let's try to get something, you know, working to where, you know, we help. We help you and your business and we help everybody.
I've been to one or two meetings.
Because it brings more to us every time you rent something to somebody.
Yeah. Like I say, I've been in Summit, I've been in Summit County for thirty-five years and they get, they get plenty of tourism money.
Yeah, I know.
So.
I know. And we wanna get some of that. That's why I'm making sure that you're domiciled here.
Our problem here is the only thing we really have is the river.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, everything else is private property and when I come to meetings and talk to people, it's like, all we have is the river and most of that's private too, so it's kinda getting tricky with, you know, where you can operate.
I'll talk to you later on all this.
Cool, I appreciate that.
If I can just send me your, your contract information, unless you're good.
I got it.
Mr. Smith has that.
All right, are you ready for a motion?
And so on, on page two, would you like me to insert at the top of the page where it says, or before July 1st, except in 2023 by August 1st? And then?
Thanks, that'll make my life easier.
And then that, that kinda goes to the, the, what I crossed out toward the bottom of page three where it says semi-annual installment. I just made that annual because of the update, I think, last time where it said it would just come once a year.
I just like to pay things off and be done with it.
Okay, and then I know when we had met to go over the contract, on page three it has paragraph fourteen, assignment and subordination, that, you know, the LSC doesn't have the right to sell assigned sublease mortgage. And we kinda got talking about like a successor or a sign, but it does have a provision on page five eighteen that allows for successors and assigns, and so we don't need to add another provision, which I had indicated on page six. So anyway, I was just gonna say I'll cross that off and other than what we've talked about today, leave everything else the same for the final.
Did you want to put in the clause, the annual, or not annual, but?
Where it's a short-term lease, I'm okay with just leaving it the way it is and we can negotiate that every five years.
Okay.
And then, sorry, one more on page seven where it's got exhibit A down at number thirteen. Talks about Barefoot Tubing LLC will provide four wooden picnic tables and clear up and maintain debris and maintain broken grass by June 1st, 2011. And maybe we just update that or, or remove it, is there?
We had, we had some problems with that access. You know the little access right by the river where the bridge is? That was, that's called the barefoot tubing access because we used to do trips, sometimes, you know, we'd go from Taggart down to the building, right there by the bridge. And we had picnic tables there and garbage cans, but we ended up with some problems 'cause I was a teenager once, I don't know how it is, but they would come and throw my tables in the river and had, had a few problems. I had a tree swing right there and they would, you know. You know how teenagers are, they sometimes get a little rambunctious and so I had some problems. So I got a little frustrated and just stopped putting picnic tables out and stopped mowing the lawn 'cause I was having problems by making it a testable. As it is, people are still using it, which is great, but.
Do you want me to strike that then, just before picnic tables?
Yeah, I don't have any picnic tables anymore. I had to throw them away.
Okay.
The ones I dug out, just thrown out of the river.
All right.
Thanks. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
It's fun to see the wheels of government turning.
You're welcome anytime.
I thought there'd be a fight or something. I thought you guys.
We're here every other Tuesday. Come on, some, some weeks are our.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the Morgan County Fairgrounds property lease agreement with Barefoot Tubing LLC as annotated in our packet by the county attorney with the further additions and revisions that we've discussed this evening. Second?
A motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we wish you the best this year. I hope you can get in there early and stay late, but.
Fortunately, everything is paid for, so. I'm not gonna be going to the courthouse this year.
Good deal.
Maybe it should be barefoot whitewater tubing.
Yeah, it might be barefoot whitewater tubing.
Say, Destination Sports is already doing it. They got kayaks going down there.
Yeah, I saw people on the river the day before yesterday. All right, on to item number six. And Austin and Garrett, thank you for getting this together. It was kinda a little bit last minute, so there's an email that you got late in the day here with this emergency declaration. Essentially, an emergency declaration allows us to access funding. That's really all this does. The declaration itself that we have written does note that it's ongoing for no more than thirty days until terminated or extended pursuant to the law. It will probably go longer than thirty days is my suspicion, this particular thing. But my thought is we can always extend it in thirty days should we feel inclined to do that.
What's wrong with saying a hundred and twenty days right now?
So I, and I had talked about that with Austin, maybe going out to July 15th, but as I was reviewing the codes that I'm referencing, you know, in the, in the declaration, it does limit it to thirty days. I'm gonna pull that up here.
That's the state code that limits it to thirty days?
The state code. So this is under.
So do we just have to amend it every thirty days until?
So actually, Mike is the one that declares it. It doesn't have to go to a vote for the initial declaration. And so it's just the chief executive officer of the county and so you would declare it.
I wanna make sure everybody's comfortable with declaring this.
Well, by statute, if a majority of them, you know, of the rest of the commission votes to terminate it, they can do it immediately.
Gotcha.
And so you do wanna have at least majority support or you could be.
I could sign it and everybody could say, nope, it's done and it'll be, it'll last two minutes.
There's try present.
I think, I think COVID's kinda modified it, so.
Well, and with COVID, they said that they, you can't, what does it say? It says you can't do it for a pandemic, so I think they changed that.
So they kinda.
Yeah, they said a chief executive officer of a municipality may not declare by proclamation a state emergency in response to an epidemic or a pandemic. So they did add that after 2020.
That's in response to Salt Lake County and Salt Lake City is what that was.
So.
But I think with having Riley here to talk to you guys before, um, yeah, we're gonna be in this for a while.
So do we just bring it every third Tuesday of the month again?
Well, it sounds like if I can just declare it, I could just re-declare it until you guys end it, right?
No. So, so, yeah, sorry.
This is fun, I don't know.
I'm glad I read the statute, otherwise I wouldn't know any of these answers. So just for those listening, it's Utah Code 5328208, but if we go down to subsection six A, it says, except is provided in subsection six B, a state of emergency described in subsection one expires the earlier of. And subsection two says thirty days after the day on which the chief executive officer declares the state of emergency and there's others. You know, the legislative body terminating by majority vote, the threat or danger is passed. So there, there's other, other ways it can terminate, but for this one where we anticipate it'll go longer under six B, it says B subsection two, it says the legislative body of a municipality or county may by majority vote extend a state of emergency for a time period stated in the motion. And so what I would say is let's, I mean, you know, if you so choose, you could declare the emergency today which would go until the 18th of May, but we have another commission meeting on May 16th. And so twenty-eight days in, the legislative body, you know, we could get a motion, an action item on the agenda where you can make a motion to extend it and at that point by majority vote, you could set a time. So it wouldn't be limited to thirty days at that.
So we can't extend it tonight? We have to wait?
Sounds like you could 'cause it doesn't say you have to wait till the end, right?
Yeah, if you declare it and then make a motion.
So I can declare it and you can make a motion to extend it now, right?
Yeah.
In theory.
If we have thirty days, let's see how it goes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not opposed to coming back every, every commission meeting and talking to you guys and just giving you updates.
Maybe we don't wanna see you every thirty days.
I don't like that. I haven't left in the mirror for a couple of weeks now for the same reason, Commissioner Anderson. But, um, it, yeah, I think I think everything we've dealt with to this point is low-level flooding that should've been mellowed off a couple, a month ago. And so the serious runoff and snowmelt hasn't even started yet.
So that being said, is there any reason to wait to declare this?
Yeah, we're kinda.
No, I'm saying we declare it now because we're already, we're already waiting into it.
I guess if you're making that point, that kinda backs up
But I think.
that we make a motion also that it lasts longer than thirty days.
But, but I don't really wanna put an end date because I don't know what it's gonna end. I mean. So this is the highest, highest snowpack.
You could extend it more than once too, right? You could extend it six days tonight and then.
And Austin, I think that's what we're saying is for us, the worst-case scenario on the termination is thirty days, 'cause then we've gotta redo it again. The best case is to extend it now and then we can address it then.
Okay.
That's fair.
That'd be the easiest.
Do you wanna go to the second week or the second meeting in June?
Or July. I don't think we'll be done in June.
Sadly, I stick here. Yeah, it's unprecedented. This is, this is, I start, I've been meeting with a lot of groups and, and and essentially everybody I've talked to and I'm sure, sorry I missed it, we were looking at another landslide that's happened up in Porterville and a flooding issue down Young Street, but it's unprecedented and I'm sure Riley told you guys that, that that what we're dealing with, we haven't ever seen before. That includes eighty-three, 2011, fifty-two. We're in uncharted territory. And so I know in 2011, Morgan. And so I know in two thousand and eleven, Morgan declared a little bit early because they were confident they would hit the threshold, and we're, we're working on that, but we've got an awful lot to deal with and to come still.
That threshold is fifty thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, it's fifty and a little bit, fifteen.
Well, we're at twenty-eight thousand, what's been turned in right now, but it's going to be more than that because we've done a lot more work since then.
That's not very accurate either.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Because there's a lot of people that didn't even know about it and didn't put them.
No, I'm talking about dollars that we've actually spent.
I'm talking about dollars that we've spent so far.
Is there, is there any reason why you wouldn't?
Yeah, is there a reason?
Declare it this point?
I don't see a reason, especially what we're talking about is declaring an emergency so that we can access emergency funds. That's what, federal funds is really what we're talking about. I don't see a downside to, to.
What it takes is, is, is when we hit our threshold of fifty thousand, the bigger counties obviously have a bigger threshold, and the state has a bigger than that threshold. And so in the other times that we've done declarations, for example, the, the wind event, we came in and that, I, I sent that to Garrett and Mike. When we did the wind event, it was declared a federal disaster, and we were just kind of the cherry on the top. Davis County and Salt Lake County had millions and millions of dollars damage, and that's what pushed the state over the threshold. We were just, we were just a part of that. And so I know right now Salt Lake's going to have some significant, maybe I shouldn't say that out loud. There's a few counties in the state of Utah that are going to have some pretty serious issues this upcoming weekend. There's some things that they're getting prepared for. So I think we can do our declaration. I think in the next month, you're going to see the majority of the commis, the majority of the other counties will follow suit.
So I'm going to declare it for thirty days, and if you want to make a, a motion to extend it to a certain period, so be it. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Any objections to that?
Hear you, hear you.
Let's do it.
Do you mind if I respond to Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, sorry.
Because maybe some others listening have the same question, like, what's the downside? I think the downside would be, you know, is it an overreach of government? Like, what does, do these emergency powers allow? And those are outlined in section fifty-three dash two-eight dash two-oh-five, and it allows, it says the authority of the chief executive officer includes, and then it has a whole list of things, and it's talking about, you know, utilizing the resources that the political subdivision is reasonably necessary, invoking provisions of mutual aid agreements, you know, if we have interlocal agreements. And it does, you know, talk about, like, if it's necessary for preserving life, ordering an evacuation, recommending routes, modes of transportation. So it, it kind of gives you the authority to direct traffic and, you know, try to prevent some danger there, you know, ingress, egress to and from disaster areas. And then, you know, maybe what, what Commissioner Wilson's thinking about, well, does it allow you to just go on private property and do whatever you need to do? When I read this one, I thought, okay, this is a good provision here because it says clearing or removing debris or wreckage that may threaten public health, public safety, or private property from publicly or privately owned land or waters, except that where there is no immediate threat to public health or safety, the chief executive officer shall not exercise this authority in relation to privately owned land or water unless the owner authorizes the employees of designated local agencies to enter the private land or waters to perform the tasks, and the owner provides an unconditional authorization for removal of the debris or wreckage and agrees to indemnify the local state government against any claim arising from the removal. And so, you know, I think some of the, the worries with a COVID, like declaring that is, well, what about private property? What about individual rights, things like that? There are some things built in where we'll stay out of the private yards and, you know, property unless they authorize it and agree to indemnify the county. And so I can work with Austin to maybe get those forms set up where.
Yeah, we probably have some documentation.
If we do, then they're going to indemnify because, you know, if, if we're trying to help, we don't want, you know, no good deed goes unpunished, and sometimes we create liability when we're trying to help someone.
And, and just following, I, I'd like to put an exclamation point on what Garrett has just said for the fact that I've had people come and say, you need to go on his property and you need to do this, this, and this. And it's like, you know what? It's, it's private property. We, there's, there's only a limit of so much that we can do. And so, but if it does, if it's one of those things where it affects our infrastructure, that's generally where we've, we've been successful in talking to the landowner and they've been good. I like the idea of having a signed agreement because I know in two thousand and eleven, they got the agreement, went in, did some work, and then the lady was rather upset because the track hoe almost ran over her dog's grave. And there was, there was some issues with that where the track hoe almost ran over your dog's grave. So if we can get a, a document to have people sign, that would be great.
So are you going to do that document in advance in case that person is?
Yeah.
Timbuktu?
Well, we'll, we'll.
I don't know if she always can.
Before we, before we enter the, because we have to have authorization and, and everyone has digital now, that even if they do, he signed it or something, I don't know, maybe there's some way to.
We'll figure that out.
Okay, because I'm just, I'm just concerned about, you know, there might be a problem area that we know is going to happen. We could possibly go to them in advance and talk to them about that. I mean, such as at two hundred feet up on Hart Scrabble, that could cause a major problem for everybody downstream, you know, that's just a.
It could.
I think as long as the agreement, the agreement's in place and the owner is authorizing it, then it's okay. But, but a state of emergency doesn't mean that the emergency manager can just go anywhere in the county and do whatever he feels is necessary. Not that he wants to, but, you know.
We don't have the resources to just go do whatever, anything.
Exactly.
You know?
And.
And frankly, there's a lot of things that are the responsibility of the private landowner as well. Just because you have flooding doesn't mean it's the county's responsibility to mitigate it in every situation.
And adding to that, I hope a lot of people are listening, listening to this, we can't financially fund everybody with everything they want. I'm starting to get a lot of landowners calling saying, I got water on my property, will you come fix the riverbank? And that just financially, that's not our responsibility. And ultimately, and ultimately, it is our responsibility to protect the county's infrastructure. And if Matt Wilson's home's between where the defensible space is and the road, and we protect Matt Wilson's home, well, that's great. But the defensible space, we have to define those areas where it's easiest to defend against flooding. And so it might come down to the, you might be on the wet side of the line. And so, but people need to understand, we can't be everybody's piggy bank on their private property. That's their responsibility. And in talking to one of the contractors we've used a lot, he went through a large portion of East Canyon Creek last year. The owner had some amazing foresight or whatever, Susan Ralston, I'm going to use her name publicly because she's amazing. I wish everybody else in this county would have followed what she did. They went out, they got the correct stream permits, and they fixed her portion, her side of East Canyon Creek. And there's other streams in this county that would have, we wouldn't be in as, we wouldn't have, we'd have fewer issues if they would have followed what she did. Because now I've got entire streams that everybody's like, you just need to start at this end and dredge all the way to the other end. I can't do that.
You know, what was interesting is back in the eighty-three, eighty-four year, that was done, I mean, not done, it was, it was supposed to have been done to prepare for an eventual one twenty or thirty years later. Well, forty years later, people got complacent, and those nice wonderful ditches that we have or had are, have not been kept up, and because of it, now we've got more flooding. And the one in Porterville at East Canyon, I mean, in, in Highway sixty-six, that was a major one, that if, if people had gone and kept that cleaned like they're supposed to, it never would have had a problem. But our problem is, is complacency, and that's where I think we have to be concerned about complacency in the future also.
In, in speaking with Commissioner Anderson, yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of projects come out of this that we're going to have things to do for the next few years. Okay?
You got another one.
Yeah, thank, thank you, sorry.
Thanks, Austin.
And thanks to you.
Okay.
So we declare a state of emergency.
Okay, so I'm going to sign it right now. We're going to declare state of emergency due to flooding in Morgan County. This, this does expire thirty days from today. If you want to do something now, that's great. If you want to wait thirty days, well, we probably do twenty-eight days because that's when our meeting is, that's fine too.
So did it say in there that we need to make a, we need to add it to the motion? Is that what you said in that?
It just said that upon motion, let's see, it just says legislative body of a county made by majority vote extend a state of emergency for a time period stated in the motion.
I'll make sure I'm doing it correctly.
So, um, so we got to.
We could also hold off for thirty days because we've already got a state of emergency now.
Yeah.
And we don't have to do anything for another, we can't double up on it, so why not just do it in May?
So.
I mean, you could say, you know, we, we can ask Julie to put it on the May sixteenth date, and then there might be more information about how long it could go, or you could just maybe say end of July, and then if it, and then you could also move to, to stop it earlier if you're done by July fifteenth.
I, I would like to add a motion to that declaration, I guess is how you would do it, but that it, that it's another thirty days or our third, or let's see, third Tuesday of June, our second meeting in June, which would be June twentieth.
Maybe you should make it the day after the third meeting in June because then we can extend it in the third meeting.
June twenty-first. I was going to put a time on there.
So June twenty-first is the day after?
Yes.
I can second that.
Okay, a motion, a second to extend the state of emergency that's been declared for flooding in Morgan County to June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second it.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
There's another issue that we have to deal with flooding, if it's okay.
Sure.
Go ahead, Corey.
Okay, you guys budgeted twenty-eight thousand for the floods. That twenty-eight thousand is gone. And however, I think we talked the other day about money that was left over from the eighty-three floods. Wayne and I went in today and found out there, right now there is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in that account for flooding. We are depleted, we have no money.
That's the flood fund or is that the eighty-three flood fund?
That is.
That's two accounts. That's the regular flood fund that comes from the taxes, right?
No, we can.
No, we've depleted that.
There's only sixteen hundred dollars in that one.
Yeah, so when we were budgeting last year, we put a twenty-eight thousand dollars on the flood fund. Well, there's, there was two, now there's one flood fund. I don't know how and where it disappeared to, but we only have, we had the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars from last year, plus now whatever is here, and it makes it a total of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars total. And that includes that nineteen eighty-three fund.
So, sorry, so is, is this different than what the email that Chair Newton sent out at four oh one today?
Well, I didn't read that one.
No, it's the same thing. My suggestion is, and I sent this to Leslie, yes, we've spent out of the, out of what we budgeted from our general fund, but we'll have to do a, a budget amendment to move money from the flood fund into that fund. My suggestion is we let it go in the red in our general fund, so out of the emergency management fund, we just go into the red. Here, in a couple of months, when we know what we've spent, we can do a budget amendment to transfer that, that money. We'll also need to do a budget amendment to transfer the money in from the state grant that's going to pay for our next item, and potentially, hopefully, some FEMA money that we can transfer in as well. So. And I sent her an email just letting her know, so if they don't stop payment, which I think they started to do, is no more payments. Letting her know, no, we're okay, we know it's going to go into the red.
Let it happen.
Let it happen. Because there's no point in us transferring money today when we have no idea how much is going to need to be transferred, if that makes sense. Is everybody on the commission okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. However, I'm just going to reiterate something else here. In nineteen eighty-four, they set up that mill levy that comes out of our taxes every single year. It's a dollar fifty for each, about for each one of us. That's almost used up every single year. I'm wondering if after this is all done and said, that we may have to increase that for the next event forty years from now or thirty years. I won't be around, Matt may not be around, he may, forty years from now. But I want, but what I'm just saying is, is we may want to look at that so that we're prepared the next time around.
And that would have to be increased as a, it'd be a truth in taxation.
Right, right.
As part of our budget process, but certainly something we ought to consider.
But we ought to consider it if, if that happens, just to help out the situation.
Projects we're going to have to work on. Because mitigation, I mean, that's supposed to be a mitigation fund, and, and that's why it's been spent is because we use it for.
Right.
Things that need to be mitigated, but.
And flooding, so. So anyway, just as a thought that I'm okay with.
So I think we're good. We'll, we'll just continue to charge to that account. We're going to go into the red, which is fine because we know where the, the fund source is to replenish it.
Okay, it works.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
This is another ratification. This is, the state gave us seventy thousand dollars to buy equipment for the mitigation of flooding. We did go through the bidding process, got several bids. We went with the lowest bid. We still are six thousand dollars over if we, with, with the trailer and the Mini-X that we purchased. So that's less than, that was a lot less anyway. Ninety-four thousand was just for the other Mini-X and so, and from everything, I, I know there were some concerns about it, but from, I did check and talk to people that have had them and done it, and they, they've liked them, so I feel comfortable with that. They will deliver that tomorrow.
Oh, good.
And we already took delivery on the trailer, right?
Correct.
That's great.
That's good. And that will be a trailer and a, and a Mini-X that we can pull behind the one ton?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a bumper pull.
Okay.
Should be good because we've got a lot of.
It's a tilt-deck trailer. Sounds like our other trailer's gone.
Yeah.
Our other trailer's got some issues. I think they were hoping to have it fixed here in the next day or two.
Yeah, we need it to be operational this next two months.
Okay. We have a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we ratify the purchase of a new twenty-twenty-three Sani SY60 hydraulic excavator and trailer from, was the trailer from Atlas?
Yes, Atlas Equipment.
Both from Atlas Equipment.
Oh, no, the trailer is from Wasatch Traders.
Okay.
Sorry.
The excavator from Atlas Equipment.
The excavator from Atlas Equipment.
And the trailer from Wasatch Trailers.
I'll second it.
Do a motion, a second, to ratify the purchase of this equipment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, back to you. Rifle range days for employees.
So I included in the packet the third Saturday of each quarter of the year, the last month. One way or another, we end up with right in the middle of the winter. So I just ended up so that they could do it around Christmas time if they wanted to. So some people do still. So they they do.
Test out their new guns.
Yep. So anyway, that those are the three dates. I put it in the packet if you're okay with that. I I'm fine with allowing them to have those days. And I guess just first come, first serve on it, you know?
That's wonderful. I think it's a great idea.
And so who will they schedule that with? Same process now?
Same process.
Okay, but it will be open up during that day?
Correct. She's going to reserve the day for them. And then they can get on and just reserve it online.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, do you have a motion on item eight?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the employee appreciation rifle range days for the third Saturday of March, June, September, and December twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second it.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're getting close here to seven for our presentation. Let's let's jump to item ten and then we'll come back to nine.
We're good to go.
Are you good to go? We're ready?
I think brother, uh, brother, sorry. Commissioner Wilson, does he need another break about now for?
We can take a quick break. Let's do that.
All right.
Let's take a quick break.
I'm good with that.
And go forward with our presentation.
Because I'd like to pay attention.
He's a long ways from you, Brandy.
A little bit about this, what I'd like to do is, you know, if you, as I talk, you think of there's an issue that you would like to see us address to help you as the county commissioners, that's agriculture based, but we don't always deal with just agriculture issues. We have a family here in the valley that sells raw milk. And they've created kind of a niche thing, but raw milk's a pretty, pretty dangerous issue because if something goes bad, the media people say, "Raw milk's bad." All milk is bad as soon as you say that. So we have these large dairies that we all enjoy cheap milk from. And so there's these kind of conflicts that we have to deal with in Farm Bureau. One of the conflicts is, we have, we have a saying at home, is that how many times you have to tell a lie before it becomes the truth? Think about that. I was in with a youth group once and some, the presenter asked that question, and the kids just kind of sat there and thought, "Holy cow, that's the truth," you know? We've had the saying that in Morgan County, it's only once or twice you have to tell a lie before it becomes the truth. No offense. But do you realize that this Great Salt Lake is not going to fill this year because of the alfalfa growing in, in Utah? I can pretty much guarantee that all the alfalfa that's growing in Morgan Summit, Weber County, never leaves this valley. It pretty much stays there and it gets used. But yet, the media says that that's the alfalfa, it's the reason the Great Salt Lake's empty, so we've got to quit growing alfalfa. Southern parts of the state, yeah, that's the case. They, they grow alfalfa down there and they export it. I don't know of anybody up north. There may be some in Bauxalde County that do export. But we want to run our farms, but yet we have to have a PR arm too, to cover our, to cover the truth. In last year's issues, two things we talked about was wildfire, I mean, excuse me, wildlife and drought. Can you imagine that? Our concerns in the issue meeting last year was whether they would come and take our water to fill the Great Salt Lake. What a difference a year makes, huh? And so those are the things. The wildlife thing, we sat in the DWR meeting the other night. They collar deer and track them. Their deer with collars north of freeway in the South Rich and Morgan District, 70% of those collared deer have died. And they, they have twice as many elk on that side than what they're supposed to have. And then over here on East Canyon, they have almost double the amount of elk that their, their objective calls for. I came, when I came to Morgan tonight, I noticed about 80 head elk on Mike Morgan's place on Stoddard Lane. And they were feeding those elk earlier, two weeks ago, they were feeding them on the mountain, they quit feeding them. Now they come back to the valley. So here you've got Mike Morgan's trying to grow some grass to feed his cows, to manage. And anyway, so those are the kind of issues that we face as Farm Bureau, as your agriculture people. And are there issues you see that you would like us to address as a Farm Bureau, to take the state Farm Bureau people to, to help support you in your county positions? Or that you think would be official, better for, for agriculture and the county? And I'd like to point out that, once a farm's sold here in Morgan County, it don't come back, because up the road from me, they just sold 20 acre lots at $50,000 a lot. An acre. And I, I can't grow much alfalfa. It don't matter if I export it to China or not. I can't, I can't buy that ground and make it work. So you have to understand, if the farmers go away, other dollars are going to gobble up that ground. And you look at any of the master plans or anything, everybody wants the agriculture to stay. And there's, it, it's more of a challenge every day. So I've opened you up to any questions. Your, Sakiya or Jim can answer questions for you there. Jim's, like I said, on the Board of Directors. One thing I'd like to point out is, next year, the National Farm Bureau Convention will be held in Salt Lake City. And that will be quite a shock. Last year was Puerto Rico, right? Did you go?
I did.
Was it worth going?
It was terrible.
Are you going to go to Salt Lake next year?
I probably will.
Maybe.
Yeah. But I'll have to wear a coat.
So anyway, but that, that will be in January, there'll be the Farm Bureau Convention, and they're starting to plan up and get ready for that. There's other folks that come in. We've got Jill Singleton over here on, they just stepped in. We have the Clark family here that, that are quite active in the, in the Farm Bureau. And anyway.
So are you just going to meet in this building?
Yeah, we're all going to go down the end. And so if you folks are bored and don't want to go home early, come on down. You guys are the true attractive nuisance. I think there's three ladies that come and watch you every two weeks. I do not understand the attraction.
But you get a quiet evening at least once every two weeks.
When she comes home, I pause the television, give her a half hour event, what you guys did.
Uh-oh, we're, we're hearing all your secrets the other day.
And then, I think I've heard it all, I push the button and away I go.
That can be pretty late.
But it's interesting, coming here tonight to hear Weber Basin, you know, Jared's on the board there, you know, they're having to make decisions that, they, they just put an impact fee on when, if I want to drill a well in Peterson, or if I want to be in Peterson Pipeline, I have to put, exchange a water share into that. As I understand it, years ago, you used to rent one acre foot, and it's got up to about $400 a share around in that ballpark. Now they only lease you, was it .65, Jared? Of acre fee. Because they're running out of water to lease. And out of that, they, they put an impact fee on you. And that impact fee's $9,000. And, but then the, the annual rental is a little bit less, but the impact fee's nine thou, almost $10,000. And the, the other thing that this creates is that my private water rights went up about 10 times value. Because I have agriculture water that I could convert to culinary water. And if I charge $10,000 plus I lease it, what am I growing alfalfa for? So those are the kind of dynamics that agriculture's faced with right now. And anyway, so, open up any discussion, if these folks, I'm here at the podium, but if these folks, if you have a question, they want to chime in.
Then give them the policy.
That'd be great. And you can see some of the policies, if you've opened the forward. I mean, not all the policy stuff is just agriculture. There's, we, we, you, you look at the table of comments and it identifies agriculture issues and then a number of things that we as citizens of the United States, we have interest in too.
So Randy, you, you hit on something that I've long been concerned with, and that is the rising property values. Once you plant a house, that's the last crop.
Exactly.
And with property values being what they are, you know, I, I farm a small amount in Croydon. I could farm my entire lifetime and never make enough on my 100 acres to buy one acre, to be quite honest. What do we do to combat that? How do you deal with that? I mean, as long as property values are...
That's what you guys are coming down and telling us for here in the middle. We're just farmers. We want, we want to be farmers. Bruce wants to bet those cows twice a day, no matter what. He doesn't want to worry about this other stuff. I don't know.
I mean, property values being what they are, it makes it really hard. You know, someday Bruce is going to retire.
Right.
And, and what's he going to do with the farm? Because one of his kids probably can't afford to buy the rest out at those kind of values. What do you do? You know, I, I look back and I think, maybe, maybe they had it right when they used to just hand everything to the oldest son of the oldest son, because at least it stayed in one piece and you could still farm. Because you start splitting it up and then there's not enough to make anything.
But that, that's the very thing that has, in my view, what has driven Morgan County is, nobody ever had to buy enough money to buy the other one out, so they just split it. And split it, and split it. And then, then they fought because that uncle got away with the best part. And, and you, you'll run into family circumstances here in the valley where that still kind of bounces around, you know? Uncle Joe got away with the best part. Those kind of things. Debbie was listening to a, a planning thing not too long ago, and it talked about conservationism. So I guess that would be it. But who's, which one of your kids are you going to curse to say, "You stay on the farm"? I have three sons. Each of them net what we gross on the farm by quite a bit. And which one of my kids am I going to curse to come and say, "Yep"? They, they all, they all have a little bit of acreage that they, you know, but they all understand the dynamics of the deal. And when you, when you start buying a, a tractor that costs you $200,000, and that's a little ones, you can buy, buy a big combine, if you live in the Midwest, for a million bucks now. And they still break down. And, and some of the other issues in Farm Bureau we've just recently faced is...
They won't when they're electric.
No, they're just going to die. Until you recharge the battery.
What a sexy good one you have. But when you get it in the river, it shorts out, then. But it, those are the kind of things that we're faced with. It's like John Deere, there's just been a struggle and the Farm Bureau's been involved in it. They, they wouldn't let, you couldn't hire anybody else to work on your equipment, other than a Farm, a, a John Deere mechanic. And...
So does Farm Bureau, is it, do they have a lobbyist group or something?
Oh, we do. We have lobby, at the Utah Legislature, we have guys that are on staff that are lobbyists. They go there.
Even on the federal level, they do?
Farm Bureau has major offices in, in Washington DC that they, you know, they're, they're involved in lobbyist. And, and we're encouraged to, we, we all know our legislators, because we're so few. And, and the Farm Bureau encourages us to know our legislators, and we keep our hands in touch with them, you know? The best thing ever happened in Morgan County is, we have three state senators right now. The way we're chopped up, we have three state senators. That's great. I know Ann Milner. I know Mr. Adams, and then Mr. Johnson. And why shouldn't I know them? Because three out of 20, was it 28 or 29?
49.
At the legislature. So those, as Farm Bureau members, we're encouraged to do that. But yet, really down deep, we'd like to stay home and take care of the farm. Any issues that you can see, as you look at that, I mean, the mission statement or those table contents, you know, I mean, we, it, it, those are the things that the Farm Bureau has interest in. To be honest, a lot of the legislation that we saw at the Legislature this last year on water was, there, there were tugging taken on in the Farm Bureau about what, what we were going to do and how we were going to do it. And these Board of Directors guys, they, how often do you meet, Jim?
Pardon me?
How often do you guys meet?
Once a month.
I see, and they go as Board Director and they chew that stuff up and then, anyway, it's, and not all farmers look at each other, you know, on this. So it, it's, it's, Farm, we, we got into a real challenge, and we've, we've been involved with Farm Bureau because of the support they gave us as a private property owner. And so, anyway, but it's, those are issues. We're going to go down, like I said, there's a few of us here tonight. When we had this meeting a month ago, we're encouraged to have these issues raising times, these meetings once a year. This, April this year for farmers is hard. You know, anyway. And I mean, the, I, I, you can't get on your fields to plant. There's, you know, I have a field that I drove across yesterday that's usually solid sod. I was seeing a tractor six inches in the ground because of the wa, so much water in there. You know, anyway, it just, so I'm anticipating a real shortage of feed this year, especially if I can't get onto the, you know, anyway. But I'm not alone. Go talk to your constituents up in Croydon, those, those sheep boys, ask them what they're going to do. They don't know. Then, then the elk have come down and eaten the low feed. Usually they start lambing those lambs and they move them up the hill and let it feed. The elk have cleaned all the low feed. So what do the sheep can eat in the mud? Anyway, it, it's, it's going to be a trying time for agriculture. And that's when those prices that, somebody that has 10 acres or 100 acres is going to say, "Man, I'm tired of doing this. I'm going to sell it." And I don't know, you know, conservation easements, there's transfer of development rights, there, there's lots of stuff out there, but you've got a lot of, lot of different ways to look at it, Mike, so I don't, I don't, I don't... If I had the answer, do you think I'd be standing here? Anyway, we appreciate your time and your, you know, I'm sure you guys, phones are ringing off the wall, everybody wants you to come and fix their flooding problem. And I hate, I hate to tell you, it ain't getting any better. You guys are going to have... I made a bet out here with the Weber Basin guys, 24th of July at 11 o'clock is when the flood stage will be over this year. Any other questions by Farm Bureau people?
That's when the fireworks will go off.
That, that would be it. We set the place on fire. I hope we can do that, Bobby.
I wish somebody within Farm Bureau would do what I suggested a while ago, and I've been talking with Farm Bureau on it.
What's that?
And that is to revamp your Green Belt laws, so that those that are truly in agriculture get the benefit, and those that are not in agriculture, don't.
And this is where, okay, now, now we have a discussion. This is my decision, I mean, my, my cure of the problem. And every year when I do taxes, I do Schedule F. Do you guys all do Schedule Fs? You don't, you live on a lot. If you don't have a Schedule F in your taxes, why do you get Green Belt?
I agree with you 100%.
And maybe that's something at the issue we can just talk about, but what you have is the politics of Salt Lake County, you have somebody that has six acres that lives in Millcrick that has a horse pasture, and he talks to his legislature, legislator, and he wants Green Belt, so he don't have to pay the $10,000 a year on that. And so those, there, there's dynamics, but that would be my solution, is if you file a Schedule F, you qualify for Green Belt.
I can agree with that.
I have, we have neighbors...
But we need to change the law, and from what I've been told by the legislator, legislature, is that now is the time that we can do that, and they'd be receptive to that. So we need to, as a group in the Farm Bureau, we need to get together to discuss that issue and see if we can find somebody that will help to write that new law. Because the law currently is from 1969. And if we go and redo that, I think it would benefit the agriculture and not just have people that own ground to own the ground and put a horse on.
Right. If you had a, if you have a conversation with Glenn Rich, she'll say, "Well, I, she'll give a report to somebody that has ground that's not being used."
Right.
And she'll go down and make an appointment, and that day, there's two horses standing on the ground. You know, so that's, that's how that's taken care of, but...
And to your point too, I think this last legislative session was really good for testing the waters as to how reopening Green Belt would sit in some different counties. Because we have had this Schedule F conversation for at least the time that I've been here, so going on two years. And so, and I do think it's a good idea, and like I said, we did get to, well, the account, the Leigh Raymond Callister firms and some stuff like that. There was at least three bills that come through that passed in regards to Green Belt, changing some of those things and looking at that ruling. And so I do think we are in an environment now where introducing the Schedule F tax break situation will be better received and something that we can definitely move forward on.
Yeah. But I, I hope it will happen.
The one I don't know about, or like S. Corporations, how those are treated, whether they have a Schedule F or if it's just...
They'll figure out a way to do it.
That, that would be, okay, thank you. Other stuff, and Green Belt would, you know, in our community, would help quite a bit. There, there, there might, you know, the, the elk management programs in the county?
Right.
That, that might change that thing a little bit too. So anyway, thank you. Any other questions?
I think you're...
It's still daylight outside, you guys can't go home yet.
We're not.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
We will, we will be down in the afternoon if you get done and need another meeting.
It sounds great.
Ed showed up, Ed Wild showed up. And I don't know where the other brothers are. Me just neither.
Well, I can't back, so it is...
Yeah, you got the best one of them. That's all right.
I guess I'm the most quiet, so then...
You can't add Logan here, you'd never get the podium back. All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move to item number 10. Commissioner Fackrell, this is approval of the state broadband grant.
So basically, we've already approved it. We approved last time in advance of our getting the approval for the, basically, there was two approvals and we only approved one. One of them, the one last time was with Horox, the, the contractor, to do the study. And this one here is, we just have to approve this broadband grant that is coming to us to pay for Horox. And, okay, so that's all it is.
It's the $30,000.
Yeah, the $30,000. And we have to record that as a budget item. We have to put it into the budget resolution and, next time, and put that in as an increase in budget, and then we expend it right back out. And Garrett has already gone through the contract, and he says he'd give us any more items. Have you, you've received the contract or not, Mike?
Yep, I received it and I've signed it.
Okay, so it's basically a ratification.
So ratifying this.
So the one that I received from Blaine, it still had Morgan County government.
Yeah, but we changed it.
But the one that, I saw in the email that the person said that they've removed and updated that.
Yeah.
And so what you signed had the update, correct?
Correct. And I, I signed it because I assumed that we had approved it because we had approved the deal with Horox, and that's where the funding was coming from.
Right.
But it sounds like we need to...
We did it backwards.
Ratify the approval of that.
Right. All right.
It looked like the same agreement to me, to be honest. I, I read through again, and I said, "I think I've already reviewed this and it was already approved," but I could be wrong.
You did.
Sure.
So what would the ratification be?
So it's just approval of the state broadband?
Okay. I'll, I'll move that we, we approved the acceptance of the state broadband grant. Ratified, I guess. It's already approved and we're ratifying.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we are on to Section G, our public hearing. Josh, this is the Family Food Production Code Amendment that was discussed, and we held the hearing a few weeks ago.
Thanks. So at the public hearing that we held four weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, it was continued to today because there were some questions that Commissioner Fackrell brought up and some concerns from the, the, the public. So I sat down with Commissioner Fackrell, we've made a few changes to address that. I'll just go through those. We've deleted the definition of family food produ, family food production light, and we've kept family food production. Family food production will apply to all smaller, single-family residential lots, as denoted in Use Table 8-5B-3. All family food production, agriculture-related uses in the large lots is just an outright permitted use. So we didn't feel like we needed to keep the large, large lot section. So we deleted that. Family food production animals is the, the Section A. We doubled all the amounts of animals that people would be allowed to have, and we added a 4H or livestock program allowance, which basically states that there would be a limit of one lamb or kid per child in a family that wants to do that, and that raise for purpose of 4H or similar agricultural programs. As far as anything else, everything else is pretty much the same. There's two things that were not deleted out that I think need to be deleted out to avoid any confusion in the future. One, we deleted the provision that it applied to all lots that were 10,000 square feet or larger. We deleted that. So the asterisks next to the P for permitted underneath farm, or next to farm animals need to be deleted. And then the definition for agriculture, including grazing, pasturing, blah, 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 in 8-5B-3 needs to be deleted as well. If you have any questions, I can answer them now.
What was the second deletion?
That we need to make?
Yeah.
So in 8-5B-3, use regulations in that table, the first deletion would be to delete out the, the bolded definition for agriculture since...
Okay.
We've added farm animals. And the farm animals will regulate on the smaller, smaller lots. And the, the change that Commissioner Fackrell asked was that it applied to all single-family residential lots regardless of size.
I think this encompasses what we talked about last time very well. Appreciate your work, Commissioner Fackrell and Josh on that.
It was touch and go there, a little bit, you know?
Any questions for staff?
So Commissioner Fackrell, on A-6-46A2, does that, does that read according to what you...
I'm fine with it. Because we went through and we did it. What's that?
How'd you come up with those numbers?
That was basically what was there before. And, and as far as the amount, I mean, the, you've got to look at what we're trying to do. This is a family food production. If we have to go and take care of ourselves, that's what I determined, we determined, I can't say I, we determined is the amount that you could actually feed a family. I mean, especially in particular chickens. If you had up to 25 chickens, you could have two dozen eggs a day. And if you by chance had to have the meat, and you didn't want to kill the chickens, you could have rabbits, because rabbits, if you have 10 rabbits, you're going to have 80 rabbits to butcher in a less than three months' time. So, you know, it's just a, just an item that, you know, can happen if you by chance are in need of food. Because that's the main purpose of this ordinance, was to have food production. And it's not to necessarily be in agriculture, it's just to have food production. It allows people to have that food production, and that was the reasoning for it. Because if I want to be in agriculture, I'm going to be in agriculture, but it's going to be in a different spot.
And I apologize, I wasn't here a lot, well, I was on the phone.
You were on the phone.
So I didn't quite understand all this, but, so on, on to, can you have a combination of all?
Yes.
So you can have the maximum that's shown, so you can have two sheep, 25 pheasants, 10 geese, for example?
No, the wording is or. So you could have, because we're talking about small, smaller lots here.
That's what I just wanted to verify. So it's, if you have two sheep, that's it.
That's what you got.
You don't have, you can't have a chicken and two sheep.
That's correct. If you want to have two sheep, then you can have two sheep. The only caveat to that is the next item, the 4H or livestock. That does allow families to, who want to participate in that, to have a lamb or a goat per child in their family.
In addition to their 25 chickens.
In addition to, yeah.
That may not work then.
I understand the logic behind that.
Yeah.
If you had 25 pheasants and 25 chickens and 25 rabbits...
Right.
And two sheep on a...
On a piece of...
Eighth of an acre.
Eighth of an acre.
You'd probably be in trouble. So I, I think I understand the logic.
But you can have, you can have a combination of those things up to those limits.
Sure.
Well, that's what I was saying, but you're saying no. So can you have, can you have two sheep? Can you have 25 pheasants?
If you wanted one sheep...
No.
And you could have...
12 pheasants.
12 chickens or 12 pheasants. So I...
Oh. Percentage wise?
Right.
Times come to that, we're going to have to barter, Blaine.
That's right. Exactly right.
Some people are going to raise rabbits, and some are going to raise chickens, and some are going to raise goats.
That's right.
God forbid we have to drink that stuff, but...
Oh, come on now.
My dad worked with a, a doctor, who was, he was Jewish, and they got talking about family food, you know, the year supply of food and the, my dad's friend says, "Well, you know Jews have, they have food supply too, right?" And my dad's like, "I didn't know that." And he's like, "Yeah, it's a gun and the nearest Mormon's house."
There's also another part of that that goes along with the food production code. And that is, is under B, if it becomes a nuisance, you can always go to him to take care of that nuisance. If by chance somebody there that says, "Well, I'm going to have five chickens and I'm going to have two lambs too." So if you feel like that is becoming a nuisance, I guess you can go to him and have it corrected. But the law states this.
Who's him?
I'm the only administrator.
Oh, okay.
He's the administrator.
Okay.
Current staffing levels-
Talk as neighbors and resolve those. Josh.
Well, current staffing levels mean that we only enforce based on complaint. So unless I get it, if I don't get a complaint, then I don't know. I don't want to know. I got plenty of other stuff to do.
Yeah, you do.
I'm glad you could take my chickens two years ago.
Yeah, me too. And the foxes enjoyed doing them. I still have one and she lets me pet her.
Train her away.
Okay. Any further questions?
So that means you can have some more there, um, Jared. You can have more chickens if you'd like.
You can have them again. I want this chicken back, Blaine.
Is there a number to this ordinance or?
Well, do we need to open up a-
We need to open up a public hearing, period, but-
I forgot.
Yeah, it'll be, um-
I don't even know what it'll be.
Morgan County Code, section eight dash two, eight dash five and eight dash six.
Eight dash two, eight dash, oh, it's right there on there. Okay.
Alright, with that being said-
I checked the motion. It should be correct.
Perfect. Let's, uh-
You did?
Just kidding.
Let's look for a motion to move into, to adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
I'm moved. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing. Opportunity for the public to address the commission.
Uh-oh.
It's alright. I don't care. Nothing different.
I know, getting late in the meeting and it's getting a little hearted, but, so I've tried to write this down. Tina Kelly, Mountain Green. With all due respect, as you guys know, that I do respect what you do and the process that you go through. This has been a confusing process to follow. The original request came to the planning commission. It was made to make a change to allow horse where it wasn't allowed in a half-acre zone or more than one horse in a half-acre zone. Now, it doesn't even talk about horses. It doesn't include horses. Added, then raising chickens was added in, which I understand the reasons why that was, 'cause I've talked to the affected person in Mountain Green who, who requested that. This has completely changed from what was heard in the planning commission public hearing and what was presented in the last commission meeting. So, I think, but you guys let me know and do what you're gonna do. Does the planning commission recommendation stand or shouldn't it be remanded back to the planning commission for them to review, because these are, are big changes? For them to review the changes and make a new recommendation? Also, this is just probably technical, but very complicated to read and understand what changed unless you followed the process from the beginning. The new changes are not highlighted in red so that the reader is aware that they are changes and how significant they are. It is difficult to read and understand as it is currently presented. It is uncertain what's been removed from the original draft. It appears that the draft that you saw last time has been thrown out and this looks like a new draft. And to the statement that it'll be enforced if a neighbor complains, staff doesn't have time for code enforcement now. You don't have enough staff to do code enforcement. And I do not see this being enforced and it shouldn't be a matter of a neighbor calling to complain on a neighbor. That's just not good ordinance. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. My name's Leslie Hurst. I'm a lifelong resident of Morgan County and I'm very proud of our, already of what you've accomplished with what we've discussed and your willingness to listen to public comment concerning this. My only concern with what was presented today pertains to lambs and goats. They do not thrive well individually. So creating an ordinance where it would be okay to have one, the survival rate decreases substantially. So I would recommend a minimum of two because they are a flock and herding type of an animal. They just don't do well on their own. So it might be opening it up for a bad situation for kids who are having those 4H experiences that if they're only allowed to have one, the odds of it surviving to the fair would be very minimal. So that would be my only concern with what was, what was submitted today, but otherwise I think it sounds wonderful. I'm excited that we're pushing forward on it.
Okay. Seeing no more, um, public comment, we'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved?
A motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
I had, I do, um, can I speak?
Absolutely.
So-
Of course I do.
That's kind of, Blaine's never asked.
I guess I didn't think about the, the, uh, amount of changes we made and, and I don't know if that's, should go back to the planning commission and get their stamp of approval on what we've all done. I don't know how that all works.
I'm gonna, let's ask our attorney about his-
So I pulled a eight dash three dash four. This is subsection E of our Morgan County Code. It says, "The county council shall schedule and hold a public hearing on the application as provided in section eight dash three dash 12 of this chapter. Following the public hearing, the county council may approve, approve with modifications or deny the proposed amendment. Prior to making a decision that goes contrary to the planning commission's recommendation, the county council may, but is not obligated to, remand the amendment to the planning commission with a request for another recommendation with additional or specific considerations. The planning commission shall review such requests as specified in subsection D of this section." So you may, but you're not obligated to.
Okay.
My other- We may if it's in contrary, right? I guess the other question is, is it in contrary or is it not? And I don't-
I don't even remember hearing about a horse.
I think it would be contrary in that it's amended from what they recommended. Not contrary like-
Like opposite.
Opposite, but just different, 'cause you amended it from what they recommended.
But the allowance was to allow for modifications with approval, so.
The question-
So it is discretionary, I guess, is the main point. It's me-
What was the bill with the horse? Do you remember a horse deal?
We addressed that.
All I know is when I was hired 10 months ago, I was asked to modify this. I looked at the existing code that was proposed back then. I modified it accordingly. I don't know anything about horses.
Well, I think this is for, um, half-acre zones and less, not more, right? Is that correct? One dash 20 is, um, is a half-acre lot.
Yeah.
If you wanted a horse in a half-acre lot, I guess you could if it's a Shetland or a Welch.
Well, you'd just have to feed it non-stop.
Yeah, that's true. You're, you'd always have to do that.
There was a language that you took out that said that you have it in a R120 zone if you had greater than an acre. You took that language out.
That's because we went from a large, we decided large was anything agriculture and above. That's half acre and above. Anything less than that goes non-agriculture or doesn't go non-agriculture. It goes into food production. So that's the reasoning. Now, as far as a, a lamb, this was my thinking on it. Uh, as far as a lamb having needing two, I did not think at that point of the combination of having chickens too. Because in reality, they're not gonna interfere. And so that would be something I could recommend having back in there. That you could have a combination of lesser amount of chickens with the two lambs or the two kids or whatever it is. But, um, but we gotta remember that this portion of the code is for food production, family food production. And that's what was brought up to us back 10 months ago was family food production. And so, yes, we did not leave in the old stuff because it was a new ordinance. Now, if it has to go back to planning commission, let them do it. I don't care. I really don't care if it goes back to the planning commission. My concern is, is when it comes back to us, now we're gonna go through the same process again.
This is an easy fix.
Okay. That's fine with me.
In that-
I really don't care. I just want it done.
In the use table eight dash five B dash three, um, I would recommend, uh, leaving in the agricultural definition for the keeping and grazing of animals and just restrict it to permitted on R120. Because then the R120 lots and larger can do anything agriculture-related, including keeping of horses and whatnot. And keep the farm animals restricted to family food production on all the smaller lots.
Perfect. That's good to meet you.
Okay, now how do, how, what is your thoughts on the herd animals?
Already permitted two.
Per child, one per child, right?
That's a separate exception. So if you only had one child, you could still have two goats.
You could?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Two sheep.
Two sheep.
Both are sheep.
Yeah. And if you had three kids, if you had four kids, you can actually have one per child during that timeframe for the 4H. If you had six kids, which there might be within our county, if they can feel that they can take care of six of them in their backyard, I guess they can do it according to this code. Not that I recommend it, but you know what? Takes up your-
You're gonna have very many take you up on that.
Yeah.
There'll be a handful and that's okay.
But there could be. I'm just saying it, it's something that is allowable. We try to take care of the 4H, FFA. Um, being able to raise a lamb and lambs don't take as much as a big sheep and they darn is noisy at times. I, I mean, I'm just, you know, and small goats, it's same way. So, it's up to you guys. I, I help design it, so.
I like the amendment that you suggested in addition to what's here. I think with that, I would be comfortable with it. It sounds like it addresses the initial concern, which was the horses.
And, uh, provision that Garrett read from the county code is consistent with 172078.
State code?
Five oh two. Although they don't have the language about it if you want to set it back. It just says you can vote on it after making any revisions the legislative body considers appropriate. That said, I don't have an objection if you want to have to take a look at it again either. I, whatever.
I'll look for a motion then.
How about it, designer?
What's that?
How about it?
No, I'm just saying, go ahead, Jared. I'm trying to stay away from this thing.
You're right in the middle of it.
I, I can make a motion. Um, I, you're gonna have to help me with that last change in particular though. So, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve an amendment to the Morgan County Code, sections eight dash two definitions, eight dash five zoning districts establish, and eight dash six supplementary regulations as proposed, but with the following modifications. In table-
Eight dash five B dash three.
Five B dash three, and deleting the one, two, three, fourth row down, agriculture, including grazing and pasturing of animals.
Leave that in to address the horse issue.
And leaving it on R1 dash 20, right?
And leave it permitted R120 only.
Okay, so we're deleting the permitted use from R112.
Correct. P, taking the P out of that.
Okay.
So-
And deleting the asterix in farm animals.
Yeah.
In the last of the rows.
Before you, have a second please. Um, tilling of the soil, what are you meaning by that? Because-
That's in the existing code.
Okay, so, but if we take it out of that, if we take it out of one dash 12, does that mean nobody can, in smaller lots-
We're not modifying the tilling. No, we're not modifying the tilling of soil. That's a separate line item and it's permitted in all zones. So if you want to have a garden,
Okay.
You can have a garden.
Alright. Good enough. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner comments?
Yes. Anything you'd like to share? Um, I gotta think of all the emails that I've gone through and all the calls and all the work. No, I don't. I don't think any in particular. Just grateful for all the residents, all the service that's been putting in. Sandbags are being filled multiple locations and I, I know different wards, different neighborhoods, just a lot of people coming out and doing their best to help out with the flooding situation, so. Publicly think, uh, Sheriff and Emergency Management Director, I think they're handling a lot of situations very well. Lot of situations that could go negative quite quickly and they're, and they're doing a very good job, so. I, I think, public comments, that's all I have for now.
Okay, great.
Um, I, I don't have anything new. Um, and you, that was very well said. This community is remarkable and I'm floored at the number of volunteer hours that have been reported to the county and I know that that's probably only a portion of what's actually taken place, but as of, was it yesterday? It was nearly 2,000 hours, volunteer hours had been reported, uh, being spent within the county on flood efforts, which is just incredible. It's a lot of time. I mean, that's, that's one full-time person for an entire year, 2,000 hours. Commissioner McCollum?
We have two potential items for the work session at our next meeting. One is the trails plan, um, which we'd like to, to get brought before the commission and the other would be the area plan for Mountain Green, both of which we think would be done. But I don't know that we could, I mean, we, we went through the area plan with the consultant. It was like two and a half hours and I told him we wouldn't have that kind of time in front of the commission, so I don't know if we want to combine those two. Do you have a preference as to which one is first or, 'cause maybe we don't want to try to do both in one.
Sounds like we better separate it then.
Do you have a preference as to which one comes first?
It doesn't matter to me, but to get funding and, well, it doesn't really matter at this point. Fundings are, I think we're okay. We can start going with funding without, so either one. Doesn't matter to me, whichever one you want to do.
Okay. Well, we'll make a decision and put one on for the work session next time.
Sounds great.
We're kinda running out of time with our consultant on the area plan.
Yeah, that's why I've seen the area plan as first. And we've already ran out of time for the trails, so it's all the UDOT that's helping us now.
Okay. That's all I have.
Commissioner Fackrell?
Um, I've got at least two items. Um, yesterday we were in a cog meeting, uh, Jared and I, and they requested that we have a joint meeting of all commissioners, school board members, city council members, as a joint meeting at the next one, which is the third Monday of May. What date was that? Jared, do you remember? And that would be at four o'clock.
Oh, 15th, sorry, 15th.
Yeah. Okay, so we need to have that and they would like to discuss, I mean, the main purpose in you coming is to discuss amongst all of us, um, community development, correct?
Yeah. Almo- almost, uh, yeah, yeah. Community development, community plan.
Community plan, that's right.
For the next few years.
Right.
May 15th at what time?
May 15th at four o'clock. You're out of town?
Yep.
And I'm gonna be out the 16th.
That conflicts with my YCC executive board meeting.
We can see if we can reschedule, but-
Yeah.
That, that's a meeting they're thinking of doing.
Yeah. 'Cause they were, would re, really like to have us there, otherwise Jared and I just get to do our normal thing. And the other thing is, is we at one time had talked about having a potential barbecue in the summer with the county employees and stuff. And we've had donated to us, um, a lot of steaks from a company in Ogden that has donated these. They're in my freezer. And, uh, we would just have to purchase a few other things such as all the condiments. You can all do the cooking. I don't care.
I'm happy to cook too.
But there's T-bones.
Tell the public you've got a lot of steak in your freezer.
I got, I've got eight freezers full of beef. They want to come-
It doesn't go south anytime soon.
They won't because they're vacuum packed. And so, anyway, that is available to us. Uh, it was given-
It was given to us by Longhorn Steakhouse.
Oh, wonderful.
So, and so, anyway, that would be great. Maybe with the retirement of Gwen, maybe that would be a good timing. Just anyway, that's a thought. And then we'd just have to purchase hamburger from somewhere for those, whatever we decide. So, so anyway, that's there in my freezer and I hope we can use it somehow. Or we can do it after all the flooding's over and we can just have that as a good time also for all those, the whole county. And, and along with all of that, I just, my, up in Porterville this last weekend on Saturday, I would say there was at least 500 people up there sandbagging and at least a couple of skidsters that were there lifting the pallets and putting them onto trailers and putting them into rows and everything else. And, and I very much appreciate everybody that was there because Sunday I was sore. And, I mean, I had my kids out there, grandkids were out there helping too. So there was a lot of man-hours put out on Saturday in whatever locations throughout the county. And so, anyway, as far as. I think that was enough for now. But I would like to go into closed session if we can.
Commissioner Wilson?
Do we have garbage bags that we would, we could provide for people that wanted to clean up? Our freeways and stuff like that?
See why we couldn't get some. That's a great idea.
You know, when we do the diers well, there were bags that they provided.
And leftover, you think?
We won't have diers well until about June this year.
I don't think those were purchased by the county. I think that was purchased by the.
Well, it's just the snow and the cold. It's the wheat, the soil conservation.
Soil conservation industry. But I don't see why we couldn't buy some bags. That's a wonderful idea.
Okay. All right. I had a family that wanted to do that. I said I'd ask and get approval.
I guess the next question is, though, are they thinking they'll kind of leave the bags and we'd come around and pick them up at some point? Is that the plan? Or are they planning on hauling them off?
I'll ask them.
Or provide them. I mean, we have some dumpsters. They could bring them to or whatever.
I'll just tell them where the dumpsters are. I'll talk to Brett.
And I've met with Melissa several times, went toward the Red Barn. Wow, what amazing place that is. I don't know if you toured that. If you, I think you have, or have the, what was it?
The Red Barn?
Yeah, I went toward that.
I don't think so.
Which Red Barn?
What is the Red Barn?
It's the, it's that Red Barn right there at the Farmington Station exit on the right-hand side. You can see that big red barn there. That's for the, for people that is basically their last chance of going to prison for life, you know? It's like you've got one last chance. And it's a two-year program. I think it could be so well-used by our county in certain situations. And you'd basically just spend two years there, up to four years. They've had a person stay four years that felt like, Cal, I just don't know if I trust myself yet. But it's free. It's, they provide them a job. They teach them good habits.
They have that restaurant there, the Chicken Place?
Yep.
Which is, by the way, is really good food.
Yeah. So they have a moving company that they employ with their, the people. They have the restaurant. Can't think of what it's called. Sticky Bird. A construction company and a clothing store, kind of like a secondhand.
I do think I listened to a podcast with the guy who put that thing together. And it was really fascinating.
It might have been the Other Side Academy too, because he's a little more, he's a little more vocal. And, yeah. But it's very similar.
Amazing program though, really. And now he's built that beautiful town homes or apartments right next door to those big white ones. And he'll, they can stay in those for $500 a month because housing's the hardest thing that they have. They can usually find a job, but housing, people don't want them. So $500 a month, he'll let them stay in there. And then after a year, they pay a portion, a portion of their wages that they're making. So just a great, great, great program.
Is that through Davis County or is that?
It's just a, it's just a.
Private?
Private.
Private, private.
Is he getting grants to be able to do it? Or what's, how is he?
He's, he's pretty wealthy himself. However, the businesses, that's how he funds it, with the businesses. And they work for free, obviously, because they stay there and live there. And they all have their assignments. They cook and clean. And the place is a, it's just, they let us open their drawers. I mean, they, their, their clothes are in little things all straight.
It's called folded.
Yeah. It's like a military thing in some way. But they would just call guys to stand up and, and it was like they'd just stand up and bear these testimonies of this place. Like it was just crazy how it changed their life. And these are, these are guys from 25 years old to, I saw a guy now that had to be in his mid-sixties, guys that have been in prison seven, eight times. Just crazy. So, anyway, that was cool. So meeting with, I'd like, I'll, I'll put on the agenda, time to meet with Melissa and discuss the COE. We've got some, some thoughts on that and different things. She did include us in her grant, her TANF grant. And so we'll, but if, if we get included in that, we would have to be a part of some type of situation there where we're in helping pay. Because Weaver's paying and the county's paying. We don't pay them anything. We donate to Weaver Health, Human Services, but we don't help with COE. So, anyway, so I'll have that on the agenda and we'll have her come up and do a presentation for us.
We just, myself and the public defender just jointly recommended one of our defendants to go there. Caused a lot of, a lot of work, especially for our victim's advocate, because there were, there were so many victims in, in what he was doing. And he did it multiple times. But, and the reason he was doing it multiple times is because he would keep getting let out, you know, on probation. And then you reoffend if you haven't kicked the addiction. And a lot of the studies show that addiction takes about 14 months to like retrain your brain, like different neurological pathways. And so when someone's in jail for 30 days and then they go back out, they're, they go back to what they're used to or what they've been missing for the 30 days. Whereas a program like this allows two years. So they're well beyond the 14 months. Plus they develop a skill set, personal accountability, all of that. And a condition of going to the Red Barn is if you leave, because you can voluntarily leave, or if you get kicked out because you're not obeying the rules, then you'll go straight to prison, was one of the conditions. And so, anyway, I'm going to try and push it for those in our community or, you know, defendants that just have an addiction that continues to come. But we'll see how it goes. That was probably just about six weeks ago that we started that. And so far, so good.
They don't, they don't just take anybody.
No, you have to request, yeah.
You have to have a desire to go there. They, they've never had a fight yet. They're really, it's, but they have had some people leave on their own accord, you know?
Sounds like an amazing program.
They may, they immediately call the police and they usually pick them up around the corner and haul them down to the prison. So some people can't ever keep walking into the wall. But anyway, that's all I have. Other than I, I'm really grateful for our community as well. It's, it's privileged to live here.
Commissioner Anderson, I think you.
Yes, I started.
And I forgot something too, sir.
We have, Commissioner Newton and I have a meeting tomorrow with the Croydon Bridge Project. So we'll keep you guys updated on that. We're doing our best to mitigate damages there. Also, back to what Commissioner Fackrell was talking about with COG, the two quarter percents that we approved sales tax, they have not shown up yet. But officially, everything will be tracking from April until June. And then we will see those two quarter percents in July. So from a county perspective, we're really going to see a difference and a bump in, in not just the COG dollars, but also Brett's, Brett's money in transportation.
We need it.
Yeah. Good timing.
The one item I neglected to share was that tomorrow evening, starting at 5:00 PM, is the fairgrounds cleanup day. So they're wrangling volunteers to go over and help clean up the fairgrounds. If you've got extra time or know somebody that's got some time, send them over there.
May I ask a question, both of you?
Sure.
The meeting you're having with whoever tomorrow for the bridge, is it including Rob White or not? Okay. Do I need to have a meeting with him now? Or shall I postpone that until all this is done?
About what?
It was just going to be a meeting with him and my concerns about him looking and taking care of Warren County.
Oh, just a general meeting with him?
General meeting.
Yeah, I think it happens whenever you want.
You can have a general meeting anytime, anywhere.
All right. I will contact him.
Okay.
Robert, he's still going to join you on Friday?
We have a request to move into closed session. Would you like to make that official motion?
I'm moving to go into closed session for the purpose of character. What was it?
Confidence. Or professional competency.
Professional competency.
And then can we add potential litigation, just a really quick item?
Okay. I'm fine with that. You can second me if you want.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. This is a roll call vote. Commissioner Fackrell?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
I vote aye. Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson. Okay, we will move into closed session. Following the closed session, it is anticipated that we will adjourn our public.